Good to go?
We are good to go.
Good evening, planning board is now in session. Today's Monday, November fifteenth at seven o'clock at night pursuant to chapter twenty of the acts of two thousand and twenty-one. An act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. Signed into law on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, this meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. People who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so by finding the meeting at www dot Southboroughtown dot com slash remote meetings. First item on the agenda is a master plan committee update. Would that be Mrs. Luttrell?
Sure, I have nothing new, we're meeting on this Wednesday, the seventeenth. The planning bar or Dropbox has the draft chapters in it and goals. Wednesday, we'll be working on the beginning of the implementation plan. And for the public, our Google Drive, which has all the information on it, is available on our website, which can you can get to through the planning board website. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Anyone from the public? If not, we'll move on to our next item, even though it's a little early, can you? What would be appropriate, Karina, to put on the screen initially, even though this is, as you know, a very, very busy meeting tonight? We plan to keep things moving and try to be as efficient as possible. Want to get through this agenda?
We don't have any revise middle at this point, so it, there's no sensing the plans up there. We have the Fussin' O'Neill review comments.
Let's get that on the screen.
Okay.
I have no intention of going through them, but I think that the board and the public should see the enormous volume of comments relative to this project.
On the Dropbox, there you go. Can everyone see the screen?
Can you scroll down to number fifty-seven?
Yes. We also haven't received yet the existing conditions plan sheet, which we're anticipating with the submission number two, the revised plan set.
Okay.
Otherwise, we could put that up on screen. We are in receipt of a copy of an ASBIL that they provided to consultation, but that's it.
The, the version you have on the screen is September twenty-ninth.
It is, so that is not the right. It is September twenty-ninth, that is the proper one. Is, that is the right one, right? Twenty-five turnpike dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. That is based on their initial submission? Yes, okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna re- Right, John, do you have that?
I looked at one this afternoon, I thought, I thought I saw one that had fifty-seven comments, maybe that was two hundred.
I think that's two hundred, the one for three twenty-five turnpike actually had twenty twenty comments.
Okay.
Plus the fact that we don't have the promised existing conditions plan sheet yet with the second submittal.
So how about putting on the screen the request for an extension?
That's item number zero-zero, Sarah.
I see it is now seven oh five PM, at which time the agenda requires continued public hearing, three twenty-five Turnpike Road, Ken's Foods Expansion, major site plan approval, this, this along with the special permit for lower impact development are continued from September twenty-seventh and October eighteenth. With the status of the, why don't you give us the status of the, of the submittal? And I would strongly recommend to the board that we, after we hear the update on the status, that we go straight to the request for an extension and keep, keep moving. Go ahead, Karina.
All right, just quickly, after the last planning board public hearing on October eighteenth, where an extension request was granted to continue the meeting to this evening with an action deadline, about four days to follow. We received a well flower meadow mixed sketch copy because Scott Doty was corresponding with the Open Space Preservation Commission. Then on October eighteenth, Attorney Bill Pizzoni submitted some documents regarding the sound analysis report that was dated June twelfth, two thousand and twenty. We received a email from a butter Deb DiMoria and her attorney, Nathan Stevens, about prior condition concerns from the original project back in two thousand and seventeen and nineteen, the modification, then. Let's see here, on October twenty-first, it's my understanding that the proponent met with the Open Space Preservation Commission and Mimi Luttrell, the Chair of the Open Space, and I met on site to look at the vegetation that had been installed from the prior projects on October twenty-eighth. On November second, I had received some PDFs of drafts of a potential submission number two, but that wasn't complete and we did not receive the full official submission. And then on November twelfth, we received a copy of the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and nineteen ASBIL that was provided for Conservation Commission. I was copied on that. And this afternoon, around four o'clock, I received an email from Bill Pizzoni with responses to some concerns from the last public hearing, that's been, not been distributed, it was too late before I had to leave the office today to get home for this, and that brings us to tonight. And that extension request is required because the deadlines for the major site plan are November nineteenth, which takes us, doesn't take us to the next meeting and the lid special permit December eighth, also shy of the December thirteenth meeting, and that's where we are.
Great, thank you. Anyone from the Kents, Kents Foods?
We do have some representatives, but I don't see anybody with their, if anyone would like to speak, please just, there you go.
Scott Doty is, his hand raised.
He did just raise his hand, so perfect. You should be coming right over.
Yes, we can hear.
Scott, you all set?
I guess so now, I
Okay.
Have some kind of window that came up, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, I tried to promote you to panelists, but I figured at least we could hear you.
All right. Good evening. The we had had an AS, the ASBIL survey done in pursuant to putting together a full existing conditions plan as Karina and I had talked about. And in reviewing it, we discovered some problems with the ASBIL conditions for the prior project that needed to be addressed, so we could address them on this next submittal of plans. The the submittal that was done earlier that Karen indicated as being incomplete did not have an existing conditions plan because we had had the survey done and we had inserted that as the existing conditions. She didn't think that that was, was the correct way to do it.
And let me just clarify, Scott, before you continue on that note, what you provided was topography of the site, not in existing conditions plans, and that's why I followed up with you, because we require an existing conditions plan, not just topography and footprints of building.
Well, but the existing conditions plan is primarily a topographic plan of, of the site. And we thought that would, that fulfilled that requirement. Didn't not, though, wasn't listed, didn't say titled existing conditions plan, so apologies for that.
You understand the difference, though, right? You do understand the difference.
Why don't we just focus on the way forward, what's next?
Well, we, we have, well, I think we thought that we, when we emailed the, the new ASBIL plan for the remainder of the site, was our expectation to at least spend a little time tonight explaining what we had found and
I think your submittal explained that very well, I don't, I don't want to take the time to go over that, that's a technical item. That's a technical item that has to be resolved between you and Fussin' O'Neill and then the board. So what, what's, what else?
Well, I would think that we, the path forward on resolving that with relations to the prior site plan approval and LID special permit, I think, would be a worthwhile topic.
For our next meeting, absolutely. I don't, I don't, I can be overruled by the board, but I don't think there's any point in going over that at this time, there's no technical resolution. I know this in your message to us, there's a proposed solution, but again, that's a technical item and we don't have time tonight to go into that level of detail, that should be done offline between you and the engineers.
All right, well, I'll work with Karina on that. The proper path to go with reviewing it with Fussin' O'Neill and coming to resolution.
If there's nothing else, then we can take action on the request for an extension.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make two motions. The first, that the public hearing for a major site plan approval be continued to December thirteenth at seven oh five PM.
Mr. Stein, that would be the second motion, we need to extend the approval period in order to schedule the continued public hearing.
So moved.
There was a motion to second, okay, and that's based on the document that was on the screen a minute ago, which was to grant the extension of the approval period to December. Is it eighteen, not nineteenth?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah, so the seventeenth, four days after the thirteenth.
And that's your motion, Mr. Stein?
Correct.
And that was your second, Mrs. Luttrell?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Luttrell, yes. The hand, yes.
So now that we've extended the approval period, we're allowed to continue a public hearing, hea- hearing before the, the end of that approval period, Mr. Stein?
The motion is to extend the public hearings for major site plan approval and special permit for low impact development. Three twenty-five Turnpike Road to seven oh five PM, December thirteenth.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Luttrell, yes. The hand, yes.
Very good, we'll see you on the thirteenth, hopefully we'll have all these plans and we can start chewing on some productive action toward this project. Next item on the agenda, I see it as seven fifteen, is a seven-ten public hearing for two hundred Turnpike Road, snow removal slash landscape contractor facility, major site plan approval and two hundred Turnpike Road, snow removal, landscape contractor facility, special permit for lower impact development. We'll ask the town planner to read the public hearing notice.
All right. It's the public hearing notice for major site plan approval and special permit for lower impact development, two hundred Turnpike Road, assessors map twenty-eight parcel three dash C. For section one seventy-four, ten of the South Cozoning Code, the Planning Board of the Town of South Co shall hold a public hearing on Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one via remote Zoom meeting to consider application of CMJ Ventures LLC for major site plan approval at seven-ten PM. For section one seventy-four dash thirteen point three of the South Cozoning Code, the Planning Board of the Town of South Co shall hold a public hearing on Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one via remote Zoom meeting to consider the application of CMJ Ventures LLC for special permit for lower impact development at seven-ten PM. These hearings concern a proposed seven thousand square foot addition of garage space in a construction of a four thousand six hundred square foot salt shed for a proposed contractors facility for a landscaping slash snow removal business, the three point one five one acre parcel is located in a highway business zoning district at two hundred Turnpike Road, assessors map twenty-eight parcel three dash C. A copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the planning board's webpage at HTTPS www dot Southboroughtown dot com slash planning dashboard or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the acts of two thousand and twenty-one, this meeting will be held virtually, no in-person attendance by the public persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to www dot Southboroughtown dot com slash remote meetings. Donald Seymour's Chair Planning Board.
Very good, thank you, now, Karina.
Yes.
You've talked to the proponent and indicated that tonight's public hearing will consist of their presentation of the proposed project. If time allows, we would entertain any questions or comments from the board, but the, the thrust of tonight's public hearing is to have the project introduced to us initially. Did you have anything else to add to that, Karina?
I can just say that we received a submission in September, we provided that to Fussin' O'Neill for review, filed with the town clerk, received illegal ads were posted in the newspapers on November first, November eighth. As required, we received return, received green, green cards and mailing receipts back, which were in order. We distributed the submission number one to town departments. We received feedback from the Board of Health regarding they anticipate having septic plans approved and go through the Board of Health. I forwarded those comments to the applicant, to the planning board and to Fussin' O'Neill. Let's see, in that, we received comments today from the DCR there in a butter to the project and they had a list of comments relating to protecting the water resource, which was also provided to the applicant and to the planning board members and to Fussin' O'Neill for future review. And that brings us to this evening, this is public hearing number one for both of those applications. And in the attendees, Sarah, we have John Crandall, who is the owner of CMJ Ventures LLC, the contractor yard business that they're proposing there. I can tell you that the existing facility was an office condo establishment and they received a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals during the summer in order to have a contractor's yard in the Business Highway District, which they're located. And so their next step was to come to planning board, site plan approval. We have John Crandall and then there should also be a Mark Santora PE. Yes. John, I'm trying to promote you, so you may be getting a little notification there. And I believe their attorney, Michael Morris, is also in the attendee list. All right, everybody should be coming over. Thanks for joining us. Here we go.
Want us to begin, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, good evening, who wants to start?
Michael Norris, Mr. Chairman, I'll be-
Good evening, good evening, Council, welcome back.
Good, good to see you again.
Good to be seen, yes.
I will give you just a little brief idea of what this business is and what's going to be going in there. I'll then ask John Crandall, the owner of the business, to give you a little more description about what he does and what'll be operating there, and finally, the engineer, Mark Santora, will give you the more specifics. This property was purchased this summer by CMJ Ventures. The CMJ Ventures is in the business of snow removal, they do large projects at shopping centers, businesses and so forth, which John will explain a little more to you. As Karina indicated, we went to the zoning board and have a, have a permit for a contractor's yard. The property will have some heavy equipment on site, it will have an addition of approximately seven thousand square feet, it was indicated in the notice. It'll also have a separate four thou, forty-five hundred, I believe, square foot salt shed and the engineer will give you more details about what that will entail. The property is located on Middle Road, there's a entranceway coming in off of Middle Road, it's surrounded by Route nine in the town DPW and also some of the town land and state land. The property, most of the use of the property being for snow removal will be obviously during snowstorms and in the winter. There'll be limited traffic access only with the equipment going in and out of there. During the normal business hours, there will be employees working there, there'll be equipment that'll be kept on the site. And as I indicated, it's a site that's going to be used for snow removal. At this point, I'm going to ask John Crandall, give you a little more information about his business, so you'll have a better understanding of what's going to be in there and then Mark will give you the more details on the site plan. John?
Thanks, Michael, and thank you all for having us this evening. I'm sure a little bit just about who we are and and, you know, why we selected the site and whatnot, and just a little bit about the project. I'm the single owner of the, the company, CMJ Ventures, is the, one of the LLCs that owns the real estate, but the name of the company is JC Grounds Management that operates a snow and ice business. They're both, oh, sorry. See, I got motion detectors in my office here. So we, I'm the single owner of the business, I've owned and operated the company since ninety-six, so I started out of high school and, and started with, with literally five hundred dollars in my business account, so businesses over the years performed well and in, through some great advisors and everything else, who, here we are today. We're roughly around six hundred employees that are, see, you know, most of which are seasonal based, so they come in in the winter months. We, most of our businesses, snow and ice removal, we also have a landscape farm. Our, the companies, types of companies, we work for, Lahey Medical, Boston Properties, Wegmans, Market Basket, Current Coffee, UPS, FedEx, you know, a lot of hospital facilities, Amazon Robotics, they're all commercial sites. And I've been coming to, I've been going up to Westboro from the North Shore, where the companies, my company started and based on the North Shore. I've been going up to Westboro for several years, visiting a friend of mine who's in business and another friend that's in Framingham. And when I was in, going out to those sites, I noticed there was a lot of commercial property out that way that, that, you know, could do service and and as we were starting to expand into Waltham and Burlington, I started really looking at the area and where would be a good site, or a good, good town to, to set up in for another branch. We came upon two hundred Turnpike and what I really was attracted to on that site was, it was really close to several, several different highways, four ninety-five, Route nine, obviously, and then the Mass Pike, and we're looking to spread out into those areas. We did test the market a little bit, we're working for several local companies now in Natick, Westboro, Marlboro, several of the other towns surrounding. And we have put an office out there, we've got about six, seven full-time employees, we hired about two hundred seasonal employees in the area, so. So we tested the market, it, it's working for us and two hundred Turnpike being a budding, the DPW, the DPW salt shed is literally about, you know, twenty feet off of the property line of, of two hundred and then the transfer station's right behind us, so we thought it might be a great, great location. I did call the town, talked to several of the town officials and, and did meet with most of the, the butters, neighbors prior to making the offer on the site and it sounded promising, so that's, that's where we are today. As far as the engineering and what's going to need to happen in order to get us up and running there, that's where I, I don't know a lot about it. I did reach out to Mark Santora, threw on a few references and Michael Norris and, and trust those two to, to move along that process. As far as the site, we have a similar setup in Danvers, Mass, we've, we've had a building about the same size and the same amount of salt storage and material storage here. Been working with this town now for about ten years out of this location and I will say, there were some, there were, you know, some things about what we're going to store on the site. We have some interesting connections with Caterpillar Equipment, most of our equipment's within five years old. As far as, so it's not old, you know, junky equipment that's out there. And as far as the material, I'm on the National Board for the Snow and Ice Management Association, I'm going to be the Chair of that board next year. And one of our advisors on that board is Phil Sexton, who is called Wit Advisors and the Wit Advisors basically focuses on the reduction of chlorides and, and salt into our groundwater, so we're, you know, been working hand in hand with, with them as long, as well as a lot of these companies that we work for and how to provide a safe environment in the winter, but do it, you know, in a way, in a way, in a method that's going to be environmentally favorable, so. At that, I'm, I'll open up questions at the end of this, but I'd like to move on to Mark and, and have him at least present our, you know, what we're looking to do on the site. And thank everyone again for being here tonight.
Thank, thank you, John. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
May I present?
Please do.
Thank you, sir. Okay, my name is Mark Santora, I'm a civil engineer from Grafton, Mass. We have prepared a site plan for two hundred Turnpike Road, as John has outlined earlier, and basically, it's a, it's a unique site where where we, our frontage is on our address, I'm sorry, is on Route nine, but our access is through Middle Road. Am I allowed to open up the drawing to present?
Yeah, you should be all set to share.
Okay, let me see if I can see.
There you go.
Everyone see that, okay, okay, great, so, so basically, I'm panning over, we, the, the property is accessed for, by Middle, Middle Road. We'll, we'll come in on Middle Road here and down this, this common driveway that we share with this a butter number one sixteen. We have access easements across this property, which we've worked back and forth to, to perfect in, in a few ways and we can get into that, details of that, if anyone has any interest, but basically, the, the access is in and through here. Can you see my mouse dragging across as I?
Yes.
Okay, great, so here's the access to the site, goes up and in, up a slight hill here. We, we, we might try to straighten that out a little bit on a, on a We might try to straighten that out a little bit on a revised plan. We have parking, proposed parking along, along here. Existing parking, there is some existing parking here. And, and here, we're going to be relocating it as such. We won't really need all this parking, but we, we're going to be rendering a paved area or laid-on area for all of this area here, which would also double as additional parking if needed. But that, this, this, this proposed area here will mainly be to line up his plows and the equipment and align them in such a manner where he can quickly get in and access the equipment, access the salt shed, and then dispatch out during storm events to perform his business. So as Attorney Norris indicated earlier, we're proposing a 100 by 77,000 square for addition to the building. The existing building is this structure right here. It's a two-story building with 8,000 square feet up and 8,000 square feet down of office space. We're going to be keeping the upper floor for office, but the lower offices are going to be removed and it's going to be converted into a garage under, where there'll be garage doors here and here. And trucks will be able to come in and park alongside this side of the building and this side of the building. And also pull in a small V, smaller pickup truck size trucks will be able to pull in to the garage in here and be worked on and stored. So there'll be significant parking also inside this building, in addition to the parking that we're proposing out here. In terms of drainage and stormwater management, we have, we have a new septic system. Well, I mentioned drainage, but drainage, but we have a new septic system proposed here. And our drain system is, is an elaborate infiltration and underground stormwater detention and attenuation system, where we're going to be collecting the water in this, this location right here, and everything will be graded gradually to the center of the parking area and then collected and, and treated through hydrodynamic particle separator and then infiltrated into the ground and through this system and this system with an overflow into an open, open detention pond with an overflow that, that, you know, in an intense tremendous storm, in excess of 100 years storm, we anticipate some overflow. Without getting too technical and into all the details, I know we have a busy meeting tonight. But we, we, in the pre-development condition, all of the water leaches into the ground on this site currently, because this is very, very good soils. It's an extremely well-drained site. It's good gravel soils. It'll be favorable for both the septic system and the drainage. As you know, being on the board, sometimes good soils don't always help our drainage design because if we have a good pre-development condition to match pre- and post-development flows, we need to really have an elaborate post-development treatment to match that. So that, that being said, we are proposing to infiltrate all of the water from the storms and through these systems with only, only overflow on 100 years storm. And in that case, very little water would be coming out here. We do have a little sliver of floodplain along here, and then I believe there might be some floodplain over an insignificant area of the site that we're not, we're not changing. There were comments from the abutters. DCR had some concern about this, the storage, the items we'll be storing on the site, salt and the salt shed and brine and brine storage tank. Those are basically the, the only materials. Oh, and also maybe John will have bagged salt products that, that would, his trucks would take with them and for hand spreading on sidewalks and so forth. The, we, John and I and the attorney had a lengthy discussion today about methodologies and how we would have some advanced treatment measures and some containment to ensure that the brine was handled properly and that there would be no chance of any spill or any leakage of that brine that was stored into the groundwater. We do acknowledge that the groundwater, although will be treated, that the drain and runoff will be treated very adequately for a normal stormwater management through the system, that the salt, that these systems do not treat for salt. We understand that. So we need to be able to provide a solution where we're going to contain the brine solution in a, in some kind of a 150% containment area or a double wall tank. And we'll, 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 we'll come up with a solution that we believe works for John and then provided those details to Fussin O'Neil for review. We've got some, some, some significant comments from Fussin O'Neil. Most, most of them seem to center around, we have not yet filed with Stormwater Board for conservation, but we anticipate doing that shortly. We will address all, all the comments that Fussin O'Neil has, has, has listed in their comment letter and we'll provide a response to that. I basically, I, we, I, we got a couple items that we'd like to talk about, but I think at this point, I'd like to turn it over to questions by the board. And if this, if you want us to get into any details about any of the specifics, we certainly can.
Thank you, Mark. We get a lot of presentations from P Es and some of them are all over the place. I want to compliment you on giving us a very good presentation without a whole lot of detail.
Thank you, sir.
You're right. The comments from Fussin O'Neil are very extensive, and some of them are very concerning. I, I could be wrong, but I thought one of them, or some of them involved the lack of a a North Arrow on the plant. And it's not the end of the world.
Right, yeah.
Right, but some of the plans, I believe some of the plans lacked that. And that's just an example that raises concern by the board. And then, of course, the number of comments is concerning. But it would seem that, based on your presentation, you're fully prepared to address those along with the DCR comments and find a way to make this whole thing work. So we look forward to that. One of the things that we hear from the public is how, how, why does site plan take so long? Why does it take months to get through site plan? And we found that the main reason for the extended period continued public hearings over many months is because the original submittal has omissions, conflicting information, errors, and it results in a lot of time being consumed to correct those things. And based on some of the things that you just said, it appears that there's still some more design work that needs to be done. All of which is okay, as long as we all understand that that's where we are with this project and that it's, it's going to take more time to get through those things than if those things were initially addressed before we opened the public hearing. So trying to set the table for the way forward, I'll open it up to the planning board if there's any questions or comments. Mr. Stein?
I'm looking forward to subsequent meetings on this agenda item. There's obviously a lot of work to do. I'm particularly concerned about the letter from the DCR. I don't remember any agenda item. I think I've been on the board for about nine years. I can't remember a letter from a state environmental agency expressing this level of concern about any project I've ever seen in Southborough. So in fairness to the proponent, I thought I would raise that as a major concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Latrell.
Good evening. Thank you. Welcome to Southborough. A process question. One of the things the site plan review was supposed to assure that the plan complies with all zoning requirements. And I know that the building commissioner denied the building permit based on three areas of the zoning code. And you sought relief in one of those areas, which was the use and received a special permit for the use. But the sections regarding the alteration and expansion to a non-conforming lot, you did not seek a special permit on, and I'm wondering why and if you're planning on going back.
Do you like us to address that through the chair?
Yes, please.
Are you referring to the frontage?
Right.
We did mention that and at the ZBA this. I, I, we, we don't have. How do I, how do I explain this? I believe we did bring it up at the, at the zoning board appeals meeting. Attorney Norris, do you remember any, any details on that?
No, but as far as the frontage is concerned, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming frontage. If you see it with an access on Middle Row, the frontage is actually on Route Nine. But because being on Route Nine, you can't have access there. The access is coming in off of Middle Row. So I would think that this would be a pre-existing use for this property that's been there for a number of years.
So I watched the ZBA hearing and it was, you did mention it and say that, and said the building commissioner had no problem with it. But in her letter, she said you needed to seek relief under 174-19 and 174-9E, which are the expansion, alteration or expansion to a non-conforming structure or a lot. So this is being expanded, obviously.
One point of clarification, we did not apply for a building permit. We just went to the building commissioner and asked for an opinion, and we were referred to the zoning board at that point.
All right. Well, that's how she writes her letter then, that it.
Yeah, no worries. We just wanted to point that out.
So, well, I'll leave that for you to think about for now. Just a couple of things that weren't on Fussin O'Neil's letter. On your landscaping, you had a note that said the trees shall be a minimum of three-inch caliper. Yet there was an asterisk on the trees that said they'd be two-inch, which does not comply with our zoning.
Our intent is to use three-inch trees. We'll clarify that.
Okay, and existing trees of six caliber or more are required to be identified on the plan. And they weren't.
I'm sorry, could you, could you, could you expand on that a little bit? I'm not understanding.
Per our, per the site plan review, 174-10B to B13, existing trees on the site that are six caliber or more need to be called out on.
I understand. Okay, so we can take, it looked, I've been on the site several times and it looked to me like there were most of it, I'm looking, I'm bringing my mouse across the screen. Most of the trees in this area here were all brush, but there may be some big trees along here that we, we could identify. Show on the plan. It gets really busy on the existing condition plan, but if that, if that's a strict requirement, we certainly can, can meet it.
And then my last question was, there's a discrepancy between the 1996 plan that you submitted in the assessor's records in what you're showing for the square footage of the lot. Has there been additional land acquired?
We go by the plan of record and the deed for the, for the, and what the law actually calks to for this square footage of the assessor has as a different number. We can certainly do, I can run the, run the area with AutoCAD and compare it to the deed and, 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 and make a statement as to the, what we believe the actual square area is. And if it varies from the assessors, they can, they're not supposed to change something based on any plan that I would submit. But what it shows up at the registry deeds is typically what the assessor would report on the assessor's cards. And if there's any difference there, we could point it out to the assessor. And if they decide to change their records, they can. But I can certainly calculate the exact area and report that to you.
Okay, so was the 1996 plan that you submitted the plan of record?
By memory, there were two plans of record, one from the 70s and one from the 80s. I'm going by memory, so I could be wrong, but there were two plans of record and both of them had the same distances and the bounds all were the same. The bearings varied a little bit. And that's common. Different surveyors will have a different bearing system, especially in the old days where now we use GPS and state plane coordinates. And it's, it's, we have a common, a common coordinate system, common bearing system. But in the past, surveys were just used to north and orient. And sometimes bearings would, you get two different surveys, surveying the same land and the bearings looks just a little different, and that's why. But distances hold, monumentation holds. We did do an underground survey and located all the monuments. And, and so.
I just don't want the town to miss out on any tax revenue.
No worries. We'll, we'll, we'll try to be accurate with the area.
Just for clarification, it's 3.5 versus 3.6, right? It was 3.51 versus 3.6. And I think the old plans were showing 3.51 and somewhere in between. It got shifted and, yeah, but I think the old plan referred Mark to 3.51 if I'm not mistaken. But I digress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Holahan.
Hi, thank you and welcome to Southborough. Thank you for the presentation. Really, my only question is if, after receipt of the DCR level, our DCR letter, are you, your intent to still ask for waiver for the water balance calculation and the hydro geological assessment?
Well, I've been given some thought, and we did some test holes for, for to determine seasonal high groundwater for both the septic system and for the drainage. And we didn't find water table within 10, 10 feet. So if you are not inclined to give that waiver to the applicant, it would be a, a, a significant cost for him to, to, to comply with that, that requirement, because we would have to then do, we have related drilling rig and put in monitoring wells, drilled deep to find groundwater. And my, my, my intuitively looking at this, I feel like, given these soils, that the water table is probably close to the elevation of the, of the lake back there, of the, the, the water empowerment down below, down in elevation, whoa, you know, down 20 feet. And so, and, 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 and again, looking at this land and the way, the way it, it, it topography is, I, I, I can, and by inspection, I know the water table, the water is going to follow the contour of the ground and flow towards, towards that resource. So I think our time and efforts would be more well-spent in designing a solution to, to contain his salt and protect, prevent the salt from ever leaving the salt storage container by either using a dual-wall tank with an. storage container by either using a dual wall tank with an alarm or a, or a concrete vessel around it with 150% capacity to, so if there ever was a rupture of the tank, the salt could never leave the site. And, and then that would rather, you know, we, we, we concede that the, this, this treatment system, there's not really a treatment system to, to treat for the salt. If it does leach into the ground, it, it will, it will leach to, to the water table eventually. And, and we would, we would prevent that from happening rather than try to analyze the water table and, 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 and make any assertions as to, you know, we wouldn't want to, I wouldn't ever make a claim that we're going to treat the water and stop it from getting to the, to the, to the, to the wetland. If, if so, you could out, it would flow to the, to the water table eventually. So we, we need to, um, put it, put it in a good containment system, basically. So I, if the, if the board could give us some indication tonight whether we, we should pursue that or not, that would be helpful.
I would just say thank you for the explanation. I think it would be in, in our best interest to see what the resolution is that you propose before we can give you really any insight or before I could. I can't speak for my fellow members of the board.
That's fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Yeah, I did think that that was a good comment. And obviously, um, that issue and whatever you propose, you're going to have to huddle with DCR. The way you explained it, if the water table is down 10 feet or 15 feet or 20 feet, that the advantage would be to know where the water table is. But how does that information? How valuable is that information relative to the proposed solution? So that, that's probably a good way to look at it and would probably be interested in what DCR has to say relative to that. Let's open it up to the, uh, anyone from the public.
You have 18 attendees currently. You don't see any hands raised. If anyone would like to speak, please let us know.
Well, that's the town planner, Karina. What are the deadlines for this site plan and lid?
The major site plan approval deadline is December 25th after, which falls after the next meeting, it's Christmas, and the special permit for lid, the deadline is January 24th.
So therefore we were able to continue this public hearing to some date between now and Christmas. Our next planning board meeting right now is December 13th. Do you do you want to come back then, or do you feel you need more time to make a make significant enough project, uh, progress to make it worthwhile? I, I, I think it, another meeting beyond that would be, would be in order between the, the work we need to do with the getting on the agenda for the conservation commission and, and, and opening a hearing there. And then the work we need to do to, I, I, I would like to go right to DCR and talk to their engineer and try to work this out and get something that they'd be happy with before coming back to you and then make revisions and have Fussin O'Neil review those revisions. And John, unless you disagree, I'm speaking to John Crandall, I, I, I'd like to continue it to your next meeting after the one you mentioned. And, and that would give us time to, to, to take a big chunk out of that.
That would be January 10th.
Yep. Mark, you're, you're the one who has to do the legwork for that. So you, you know, if the chairman and the board agree with that, then it makes sense to me. Just while, while I have the attention, um, the, as far as the comments from DCR, I reviewed them as well. It is something that I'm, I do work with a lot of, um, these, these larger companies that are trying to actively reduce chloride and chloride into the, into the waterways. So it's something I'm passionate about myself and we'll, uh, we are going to be doing something. I can, I can suggest that it's likely going to be just as good or better than what the town's doing right next door with their salt shed. So, um, I'm, I'm interested to hear what DCR has to say. But you know, our salt will be under, under roof, um, what, you know, so it won't have water runoff and whatnot. Our bag material will be likely under roof or it'll be stored in a place where it's, it's contained anyhow. And, and as Mark said, likely our brine will be in a double wall container. So I think it's very unlikely that we'll have, um, salt material or chlorides, uh, having any, having any issue. And that would be my intent as the owner, um, not just because of detriment to the environment around us, but also just because it's, it's one of our missions as the company to provide to our clients. So, um, if we're going to do it for our clients, we're going to do it for ourselves. But, um, Mark, it's, uh, as far as the timing of the meeting, it's, you have to do the work. So whatever makes sense.
What, when I'm, I, I feel like the board doesn't want us coming back unprepared. So I, I think we should take the extra time to, to, to do what we need to do and get this, this really close to where we can give them something that they can be confident in voting on. So let's go to the meeting after the 16th.
Sounds good.
Karina, say that day again.
Uh, the, the next meeting after December 13th is January 10th, 2022.
So what we would need is for you, the proponent, to request a, uh, extension of the approval period for both the, um, site plan and the special permit to at least the Friday after the 10th, which I think would be January 14th. Read. So if you request that verbally and follow it up with the form signed by the responsible party, the board can take action on that tonight based on your verbal. And then when Karina receives the written, uh, signed request and the board having voted, uh, to grant that hopefully tonight, um, then I would sign it and it would be filed with the town clerk. And we would be able to continue the public hearing to January 10th, which is currently beyond the, the current approval period. So who has the authority to request the extension? Mr. Chairman, on behalf of John Crandall, the, the applicant and owner, we'd like to request a extension of the time to approve both the major site plan approval and the special permit to the Friday after the next meeting. And the dates that Karina outlined. That would be January 14th. And are you committing to submit the, the proper form, uh, signed to the town planner? Yes, SAP. Yes, sir. So based on that, we could entertain a motion to grant that request.
So, uh, the lid is already pushed out until the 24th. So I guess we're just extending the major site plan approval.
Oh, that's right. I was looking at the wrong date. Yes, we don't need to extend the lid. Yeah. I modify my request to that, to, to, to include only the one, only the, not the lid, the space, major residential, major, I'm sorry. Major specials, major site plan approval.
Okay, so the, uh, motion is to extend the approval period for a major site plan for 200 Turnpike Road to January 14th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes. Lohan, yes.
Very good. So we've extended the approval period. Now we have the ability to continue the public hearing to January 10th at seven, 10.
Seven.
Seven, 10. Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yeah. Lohan, yes.
Okay, we'll see you on, uh, January 10th. Thank, thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a, uh, public hearing for One Pine Hill Drive Harvard University Collection Storage Bu, Building, Major Site Plan Approval and One Pine Hill Drive Harvard University Collection Storage Building Special Permit for Lower Impact Development. This is a, uh, the beginning of a, a public hearing. We'll ask the town planner to read the public hearing notes. And ask Sarah to clear the, um,
I was trying. We're all set.
You're always ahead of us, Sarah. You're on, Karina.
All right. This is the public hearing notice for major site plan approval and special permit for lower impact development. One Pine Hill Drive Assessor's Map 95 Parcel 1. Per Section 174-10 of the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, November 15th, 2021. Be a remote Zoom meeting to consider application of Diane Gray, Senior Campus Planner, Harvard Planning Office on behalf of Harvard Real Estate for Major Site Plan Approval at 7:15 PM. For Section 174-13.3, the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, November 15th, 2021, be a remote Zoom meeting to consider the application of Diane Gray, Senior Campus Planner, Harvard Planning Office on behalf of Harvard Real Estate for a special permit for lower impact development at 7:15 PM. These hearings concern a collection storage facility for long-term records retention with the addition of a 17,500 square foot pre-engineered warehouse structure and renovation of a 7,200 square foot storage shed connected to each other by a 2,500 square foot addition for central processing and loading. The 89 acre parcel is located in the Residence A District at One Pine Hill Drive, Assessor's Map 95 Parcel 1. Copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the planning board's webpage at southboroughtown.com slash planning dashboard or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be held virtually, no in-person attendance by the public persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress may do so by going to www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. Donald Seymour, Chair, Planning Board.
Very good. Thank you. It's been a while, uh, but we welcome Harvard back to the planning board. We've had other projects before this board over the years and look forward to looking at this one. Karina, um, did you want to give us, uh, how we, how we got to this, this point with the materials?
Sure. So October 19th, towards the end of December, we received submission number one. Was filed with the town clerk on, uh, October 26th. It was submitted to Fussin O'Neil for review. It was published in the newspaper on November 1st and November 8th. Legal ads, um, were provided to the Butters. We received, um, green card return receipts as well as the mailing receipts for the Butters, not only in Southborough, but the adjacent Marlboro area that would, would be, um, in the radius. The plans and information were distributed to town departments and town council. We received feedback from, uh, the Board of Health, which was, um, subsequently provided to, um, the applicant planning board, um, referring to, um, the applicant needs to show septic capacity and connections on a plan to be approved by the Board of Health prior to issuing a building permit. So the applicant was advised by me to reach out to the Board of Health. We received, uh, a review from Fussin O'Neil on the end of last week, which was distributed to, um, the applicant, the planning board. We also know that they are scheduled for the Conservation Commission Public Hearing for Stormwater Management Permit this Thursday, November 18th. And that brings us to this evening. This is public hearing number one for this project. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, good evening. Who should go first?
Good evening. I'll, I'll start off and, um, introduce the team and, um, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Diane Gray from the Harvard Planning Office. I'm joined this evening by our team, Tony Paprocki of ADP Architecture, Matt Cody of Harvard Real Estate, Bill Maher of Niche Engineering, and Kendall Mar Trumbo of Harvard Public Affairs and Communications. We're here tonight to talk about the, um, record storage project on the existing campus at One Pine Hill Drive. Um, Harvard has been the owner of the property since 1963 and currently it has the Harvard Depository located on the site. Um, this project we're going to talk about this evening includes a renovation of a storage shed, a new pre-engineered building, and in addition to join the buildings to create a, a storage building. Um, the project supports the university's mission in that it provides storage for important records as part of the Harvard Library. At this point in the presentation, I'm going to pass it to Tony who will, um, give an overview of the project.
Thank you, Diane. Um, once again, my name is Tony Paprocki. I'm the principal architect with Anthony D. Paprocki Architecture out of Swam Scott. Tonight, myself and Bill Maher from Niche Engineering are going to represent the design team and give you a little bit of an overview of the process and the project, uh, the materials that we provided to you. Is it okay if I share?
Yes, you should be all set to do so.
Perfect. So just, just by way of introduction, we won't go through all of the information that we gave you guys because we gave you copious amounts of paper and I think the materials are all there. We just kind of want to give you a high level overview of what we're planning for the project. As Diane mentioned, uh, those of you that are familiar with the site, this is a, a locust plan of, of where One Pine Hill Drive is located. Um, a unique feature of the site is that it kind of straddles the line between Southborough and Marlboro. And I'll show you a campus plan in a moment here that kind of talks about where our development is and where the existing development on the campus is. Um, access to the site is only by Parmenter Street, uh, which runs past here. There's a single drive on the way in with a gatehouse at that location. Uh, for those of you that have seen the site, um, that is the primary way in and out of the campus. Um, as Diane mentioned, this project that we're proposing is a continuation of the current use on site. Um, this is a supportive building for the Harvard Depository that'll be used by current employees of the Depository. So there's no real expected additional trips or additional employees here. Essentially people working at the Depository will come over to this building to process and store records. It is a storage building for long-term storage. It's not an active warehouse facility or anything of the like. Um, just again, to kind of give a little bit of an overview of the campus, um, this is a map of the overall Harvard Southborough campus. There's a couple of existing structures on this. As I mentioned before, access comes off Parmenter Road down Pine Hill Drive. The Marlboro, Southborough Town Line is approximately here. So all of the main development is on the Southborough side of the campus. Currently just zooming in a little bit farther here, the main tenant occupant on the campus is the Book Depository, which is this large structure off on the side here. Um, other, other things that are on the campus right now, there's an existing building, Building Six, which is not currently in use. Um, there's also former buildings five and seven on this side of the campus here, which are in the process of being demolition, demolished and returned back to a slab condition. Aside from that, there are some existing slabs, these kind of lighter gray forms here and here are former building slabs from buildings which were removed a number of years ago and are currently just left in the slab condition. Um, our site is at the top of the plan here located with these red boxes. Uh, it consists of the existing storage shed that Diane had mentioned, as well as our addition off on the side here, um, located just inside of the 25 foot setback off that property line on the side. The site currently, as I'll show you in a moment here on the existing civil plan, the site currently does have a demolished slab from a former building, which will be removed as part of this project to make way for the development of our, of our building. Again, just to kind of note here before we jump into the plans, there, there is a property line. It's sort of an irregular property line that runs around the campus here. The most relevant property line for this project is the one off on the left here, which is adjacent to our new construction. On all other sides of the On all other sides of the project as we're proposing it, we are well within the property setback line, well within the property of Harvard-Southborough campus. Just to kind of give a quick orientation on the overall plan here, this is rotated ninety degrees from the plan I was just showing you. So north is kind of more to the left, it's actually technically up and to the left. We have kind of a unique site here. On the existing, on this site here, we've got the existing shed building, which is this rectangle on the top here. It's approximately a seventy-five-hundred gross square foot building, and our addition is everything planned south of this with a small kind of new construction connector building and then the large seventeen thousand five hundred square feet pre-engineered structure, which is giving us the added storage capacity here on the site. Access to the site is from an existing series of roadways on the campus down over here. There's an existing drive that comes up that formerly served the building that was located here, as well as the shed. What we're doing is trying to retain as much of the existing developed site as we can and return that back to a better condition than we found it in by minimizing development to the site of what's already been developed here on campus. So again, access to our site comes up this main drive. We have a new courtyard in the middle here between the existing shed and the new building. That's where our loading activity and access to our loading dock, as well as the main door for the facility are located. Beyond that, we have a small parking area that's been added here with four new parking spaces, as well as a roadway that wraps around the building to the back, primarily to provide fire department access for the entirety of the facility, but also to provide maintenance access to air handling units and a new emergency generator that are located at the rear of the building. One note, we have included our zoning requirements. I know one of the things in the Fussin O'Neil comments was notes about the gross floor area as well as parking counts. This twenty-six thousand two hundred twenty-nine is the floor area based on the way that your zoning code requires us to count the floor area. That consists of just a little bit under a thousand square feet of processing space, as well as a little bit over twenty-five thousand square feet of storage and support space. Again, it's not a warehouse facility, this is a passive storage facility. One thing to note, there is the existing Depository on the campus. The use interpretation of this building as storage rather than warehouse is consistent with the two thousand and eight decision that was done for the Depository. The uses are very similar, and that decision allowed us to only put parking on the site relative to the processing area since the storage was not an active use, it was a long-term storage facility. So in our parking and loading calculations, based on the processing area, we're required to provide four new spaces. That's what we've shown in the plan at this point. We're also required for that processing area and storage area to provide one loading space, and that has resulted in this new loading bay, as well as these four parking spaces. One note about the loading bay, it is a self-contained loading bay. The idea is that small Harvard University vans will come from the Depository building to this building, pull entirely into this loading bay, and close the door for all loading activities. That's primarily for environmental control as well as security, so we don't have trucks idling there with the tailgate open or anything. It's largely a garage that they're pulling into for offloading and unloading. Beyond that, on this plan, I think we noted in the Fussin O'Neil report that there was a question about the widths of parking spaces. I believe on our civil plan, we had showed them narrower than what the bylaw requires. Obviously, our plan will comply with the bylaw, and we will revise those parking spaces as needed to make sure that we comply with it. One other thing just to point out in this overall plan, one thing that we are adding to the site is a underground forty-five thousand gallon fire protection cistern. We did a water analysis of the site using a hydroflow test, and there was not sufficient water pressure at the site for fire protection needs. So this was the solution, adding in the cistern. This is very similar to a system that exists at the Depository building next door. That will allow us to meet the fire protection requirements for this building without any additional pumps or overtaxing of the water system. We've also included a lighting plan in here, as well as information both on this plan and in the supplemental package that we provided with photometric data and cut sheets analyzing what those fixtures are. This consists of three different lighting types, the first of which is a wall-mounted fixture, which is primarily used for illumination of our loading courtyard space here. This amounts to four fixtures that are located facing this courtyard, mounted at nine feet above the grade, illuminating only this courtyard space, not beyond it. It's one of the reasons we kept all the lighting low and kept the fixtures that we specified with a low throw, so that we weren't creating light pollution or anything off the site. We also have one of those fixtures located here, which again shines towards the Southborough campus. That's primarily for lighting in the parking lot for safety, as well as anyone that might after hours be coming down this access road. The W-two fixture shown here is this small wall-mounted fixture. This is our Egress lighting. This is primarily located at exits to the building. Again, primary access to the facility is through this main door at the center in this courtyard space. We do have some emergency exits on the side here, here, in the back of the building here and here. And again, that has a pair of light fixtures like this type here, one of which is on emergency power and one of which is active in use. The final lighting fixture type that we have here is this recessed downlight. These are three fixtures that are recessed into a canopy, flush with the canopy height just above the entrance, again, to give some lighting at that entrance, but again, not spilling beyond it. One thing to note on this plan, the property line, as I've mentioned before, is down over on this side of the property, the bottom portion of the plan here. All of our fixtures, the only fixtures that are near that property line are these two here. And again, that's this lower intensity door fixture. It's approximately fifty to sixty feet away from the edge of the building and then another twenty feet at least to the property line. So we're confident with the fixtures that we specified with the placement on the building that there's no light trespass beyond the property line. And again, the majority of the lighting is inside of that courtyard space that we have here that's shielded on all sides by the building itself. Kind of jumping ahead beyond some of the other information provided here, just to give a little bit of an overview of some of the civil drawings that we've got, and we'll have Bill chime in here if I forget to say anything. This is our utility demolition and erosion control plan. So this shows the existing, kind of in this white area here, the existing slab that we're removing as part of this project, as well as the footprint of the new building, which we're putting, as I just explained in the previous one, as well as the footprint of the existing building, which we're renovating. One thing that we should note on here is that we are reducing the amount of impervious surface on the campus. We've included calculations in the report to reflect that, primarily by taking away this slab that is currently not in use and replacing it with less roadways. We're eliminating a lot of this parking space down here and also replacing what previously was, for all intents and purposes, dirty impervious surface, roadways that have salt and other particles on them, with roof surfaces, which are better managed from a rainwater perspective. One thing to note here, there is a note on these plans that talk about, it's a general note that talks about trees and vegetation in this area may need to be removed for grading activities, contractor to feel verified prior to construction. This note appears on a couple of these spots. The intent on this plan is to not exceed the boundaries of the current wooded area on the side here. So we've taken great pains in developing this plan to make sure that we aren't going into that existing tree line. We're going near it, but not into it. So the intent is that we are not removing any trees on the site and specifically not removing any trees that are six inches in caliper or greater. There will be some pruning of trees as they kind of come along roadways, just because the site is a little bit more overgrown. That's kind of a regular maintenance thing, as well as something just with construction access, making sure that we don't cause damage to those trees. But the majority of clearing on the site will deal with grasses and just kind of overgrowth that is within the two buildings through pavement and things like that, as well as on the existing slabs. As I mentioned before, we're taking care to make sure that our project is within the previously developed zone, so we're not clearcutting anything, we're not drastically changing any grades or anything like that, largely trying to tread lightly on the site and reuse it in an intelligent way. On the site utilities, this plan was also included in your package. This just shows our intent for connecting to existing utilities on the site. One thing to highlight, Karina had mentioned the comment from the Board of Health relative to septic systems. This project, somewhat unique to projects in Southborough, is actually connected to the Marlborough sewer line. There's a sewer, existing sewer feed that comes through here, the whole campus is served off of Marlborough. So we don't have any septic systems proposed for this project, nor do we anticipate adding any calculations or anything for that septic system. We are working with the town of Marlborough to make sure that we have the proper applications and permits for attaching, reattaching that existing line and adding the small load from the new bathroom that's in this facility to that sewer system. Again, on the utility side, similar to the intent for the whole project, we are attempting to minimize the impact on the site. We're reusing existing underground manholes and underground feeds for the property. We are modifying catch basins and some of the drainage systems that are on site, but keeping the existing site drainage that was utilized with a few minor improvements. And again, as I mentioned before, we do have parking spaces dimensioned here, but we will revise those as required to comply with the town of Southborough zoning guidelines. The last plan that I just wanted to give an overview of here is the site grading plan. We've kind of, on this drawing, indicated both our site grading to give a sense of where we're impacting the site. Primarily, it's on this side here where we're doing some regrading of a little hillside here, just for stability around the building, as well as some minor regrading around that new access road. Again, the intent here is this area, for those of you that have been out to the campus, there are no existing trees in this developed area. It's all contained within the edge of the wood line that's on the side here. So this plan is our grading plan, but also kind of expresses the intent for our landscaping on the project. Landscaping is extremely minimal. As I mentioned, we are not planning on removing any trees. We are taking away impervious surface, and in some places where we are removing impervious surface, the intent is to put back planted grass, put back loam and seed. I know we've talked with Harvard about what type of seed that is. I think the intent there is to try to use native species, things that are easily maintainable. Matt and Diane can touch on that more if we'd like later on in the presentation here. One other thing just on this plan to note, we gave an outline in our package about how we were responding to the lid guidelines that are put forth in your bylaw. Just to highlight a few of the things that we're doing to make sure that they're clear, as I mentioned, one of the things is we selected the site for this project intentionally to utilize a part of the campus that was previously developed, thinking that the development here could improve that site, improve drainage, but also would not result in cutting down any more trees or anything else in this beautiful wooded site. It's a relatively flat site. We're maintaining the existing grades, as well as the existing stormwater flows throughout the site with minor modifications. Overall, we have a reduction in pervious paving system, as I mentioned, and we're translating some of that surface area to roofs as opposed to streets. The roofs will be combined with gutter systems that help manage the runoff from the roofs in a more thoughtful way. One other thing in the design here that we thought of is kind of creating, envisioning this as a combined building rather than two separate buildings with a central loading area. That was done intentionally to reduce the amount of roadways that we required, as well as the amount of impact to the site, so that we could reduce the amount of paving that's on the site. And then just one final thing, we did opt to go with a white roof on this building, as well as the existing building. That's an intention of obviously trying to lower the heat island effect and making sure that we're not contributing to, you know, any adverse environmental characteristics on the site in this area. With that, I think that's the overview of the plans. Just to note, I think you've all also got this packet in your materials. This was our attempt at providing, hopefully, a very user-friendly way of combing through all this information. Everything else that we were required to submit, we believe is in this package here, including our narrative, our zoning table, lighting calculations, as well as all of the documentation relative to the lower impact development permit, including development impact statement and wastewater disposal plans. So with that, I think I could go on more, but I think that's probably a good place to stop and open it up to the panel and see what comments you guys may have or questions that we can elaborate on.
So Anthony, that's Mr. Maher's not going to speak. We're all set.
Bill, anything to add?
Sorry, nope, I think Tony covered it all. I know that we are reducing the impervious area by about nine percent of what is there now, so just to give an idea as to what that number will be, which is a little over five thousand square feet of reduced impervious area. But other than that, I think Tony covered everything that is proposed for the site. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the planning board. Mr. Stein?
That was a very good presentation. Thank you. I have no questions at this time.
Mrs. Latrell?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. On the lighting, are those wall packs, well, one of them, it looks like it points straight down, but are they all shielded and pointing down and not up into the sky?
They are, that's correct. The one on the top here, it's an LED fixture. It does have shielding on the inside, as well as the prism itself to direct the lighting downward, and it has, you know, this little bit of a hood on the top, obviously, to prevent any lighting from escaping out the top.
Okay. And the bottom one?
The bottom one here? This is a soffit fixture, so this is just mounted recessed inside of that soffit at the front of the building here. These are all flush with the underside of that overhang of the roof, and they all point downward.
Okay. The note that the contractor can remove trees, I'm not comfortable with that. If you don't think that they're going to be need to be removed and they're outside the limit of work, I would feel more comfortable with removing that note, so we know what trees that are remaining.
I think, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're fine with that. I think, like I said, the intent here was to talk about clearing of the vegetation, but again, we don't expect any tree removal is necessary.
Correct. Correct. And no objections to removing or modifying that note appropriately.
Okay. And as far as landscaping, natives are preferred. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Houlihan?
So the only thing that I have to say is I just have a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest that I just want to say, I am a visiting scholar at the VES Institute of Harvard, and I just want to say that I believe I can act duly in my obligations as a planning board member, and I just wanted to let you know that, and I have no questions at this point. It was an excellent presentation, so thank you.
So at this point, Marnie, you don't feel that any of your work at Harvard will eventually be stored there?
No. It would be lovely, but I don't think we'd ever would.
Never know. I think you're going to have a problem with that wall pack. There's a lot of other light fixtures out there. If we start allowing one proponent to use wall packs, all the others will want to use them, and there are, there's plenty of other good fixtures that'll accomplish the same thing. The other thing is, and I could be wrong on this, because it seems tonight I had my notes mixed up relative to these projects tonight, but I thought one of the notes from Fussin O'Neil indicated that the landscaping, there's no landscaping. And this site is so remote, that may be appropriate. So you may want to consider, if you're asking for the board to waive any or all of the required landscaping, we have, the board has granted similar waivers. And the way it was off, is offset is the proponent would donate trees to be planted elsewhere in town. So you may want to consider that also. I think that's all we have for tonight. Again, I agree, it is a very thorough and concise presentation. We're off to a good start, I think. So open it up to the public, any questions or comments?
We have eleven attendees currently. I don't have any hands raised. Anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand.
So our next meeting is December thirteenth, which is within the current approval period for both the lid and the major site plan. Do you anticipate sufficient progress to justify getting on that next agenda? Beyond that, it would be January tenth.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
In terms of the scope of what we would need to resubmit for that review, I think the things that I heard from the discussion are the revision to the plan to take away the note about the tree removal. The comment about the wall pack, it sounds like you definitely would like us to find a different fixture. The the comment about the wall pack, it sounds like you definitely would like us to find a different fixture, which I I think we're open to looking for a different fixture. The landscape requirement note from Fussin O'Neil was relative to, I think, their misinterpretation of the parking requirement. Classifying this as a warehouse facility as opposed to a passive storage use. That that comment was about adding the required landscaping for ornamental trees and things for expanded parking areas. For that one, I don't believe that we are required to submit anything for that since we are not adding more than four parking spaces. So beyond those, I just want to make sure, is there anything else beyond those items that that the board is looking for revisions or feedback on? At that next hearing?
Well, you've got quite a list of things from Fussin O'Neil to address. So you got, I think you got the best from the planning board that you could get tonight based on the current status of the project plans and the the notes from Fussin O'Neil. Some of the response responses or revisions may generate additional questions or comments, but like I said earlier, I think we're off to a very good start. And my question to you is, if you come back on December 10th. Do you feel that's enough time to make adequate progress? Or not? And if not, then you can use some additional time and we would continue the hearing to January 10th.
Yep.
I just interject one thing here. One of the things that I had referenced to the applicant was the need for a photometric plan. That shows zero trespass, particularly down near the proximity to the west. Where you're at the 25 foot setback area. If I'm not mistaken, there was information included in the specification sheets for the light fixtures, but there isn't a photometric plan. So I just wanted the planning board to be aware of that. If they want to see that level of detail for the lights that are proposed or not.
Could I speak or should I let Mrs. Luttrell speak and say basically the same thing? That we would be looking forward to that photometric plan. We have a new outdoor illumination bylaw in the town and that's a a hot topic around town. To not get that would set a bad precedent for others.
Understood.
Thanks.
So back again, the question, you want to come back on the 10th with sufficient progress? Or do you want to come back in January? I mean, on the 13th, right, 13th, Jan, December 13th?
So speaking, speaking for Diane, yes, I believe we'll be ready to come back on the 13th of December.
Yes, we would like to come back on December, the next the next available meeting and we've we've heard your comments and and will be prepared to have the revised plan. The responses to Fussin O'Neil and the photometric plan and a revision to the wall pack light. So did I did I state those items correctly? And then we'll explain in our comments that you know, the four zoning, the four parking spaces meet the zoning requirement. So that we can clarify that in our responses to Fussin O'Neil.
Okay, and this is beyond our jurisdiction. But I think it would help the planning board and the public with a better understanding of the site. You've explained the type of storage that it is, you have climate control, emergency generator and all that stuff. But is there like a catalog cut or some type of photos that you could show us of the the, you know, those storage units inside? Are they shelves? Are they boxes? Are they cylinders? It's just a curiosity as to what type of stuff you're storing and what the mechanism is, what the actual containers are and maybe how they're managed. You don't have to do that. I think it's just a curiosity. We're always interested in what Harvard's up to. I mean, what Harvard's doing.
So I could chime in quickly. So it's it's boxes of of records, whether it's human resource, financial academic papers on compact mechanical shelving throughout the space. So I think the number that we originally got from the library was they had 80,000 boxes to store somewhere.
So that should free up some space somewhere else, right?
It would free up space within the depository. Yes. And that's the whole purpose of this with their strict temperature controls for the artifacts there. These don't require such strict controls and why they want to move them here and then free up space within the depository.
Great, okay. Any other questions or comments? So this would be appropriate time to continue the public hearings to 7:15 PM on December 13th.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor, Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Oh, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Great. We'll see you on the 13th.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great Thanksgiving.
You too. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 22 Lover's Lane, scenic road, stone wall and tree removal. Well, ask the town planner to give us an update on this. I'll read the public hearing notice. Thank you.
Okay, the public hearing notice. Scenic Road Stonewall and Tree Removal for 22 Lover's Lane, map 41 parcel 16. Pursuant to the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15, see, the Southborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing on November 15th, 2021 at 7:20 PM via virtual Zoom meeting to consider the removal parts of the stone wall and 10 trees at 22 Lover's Lane, which is designated to scenic road, scenic road in the town of Southborough. The 10 pignut hickory trees range from three inches to 12 inch in diameter. Each tree is posted with a laminated placard. The request for stone wall and multiple tree removal was made by Hamid Hatami for driveway construction for access for a new single family home. Copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the site on the planning board's webpage at southboroughtown.com/planningdashboard or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be held virtually, no in-person attendance by the public by the public persons wishing to participate in this meeting while in progress, they do so by going online to www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. Donald C. Morris, Chair, Planning Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now, could you update us on what's been submitted?
So in mid-October, we received an application from Hamid Hatami, resident and developer in Southborough. The application was filed. We reviewed the information and then the application was complete and filed on October 27th with the town clerk. Legal ads were sent out by the applicant and posted in the newspapers on November 1st and November 8th. As required, we received green cards and mailing receipts on November 10th. Which were complete. Then the information was distributed to the DPW, the Building Department, Conservation, Town Administrator and Town Council. We received an email from three of Butters. Heidi Davis. Just trying to see where the from 14 Lover's Lane and then from the Butters at 20 Lover's Lane and 18 A Lover's Lane. I just can't see the name. Oh, the Hasiotis. They were objecting to the removal of the trees. Then I received a letter, I received an email from, sorry about that, from Heidi Davis today and she was hoping to be able to attend this meeting, but she had another obligation and the event she could not meet today. Sorry about that. My alarm went off. She asked me to post her question to the planning board and to the applicant. If 22 Lover's Lane is planned for a single family dwelling and not any other type of project such as a protected use. Although that's probably not under the jurisdiction of the planning board, but that was a question that was posed. And that brings us to this evening. Public hearing number one. And I believe Mr. Hatami is in the attendees list, Sarah. Hamid Hatami. Yep. And I'm not sure if there are any other residents here that came for this, but I guess they'll raise their hand.
You should be coming over.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. Can you folks hear me okay?
Good evening, welcome. Yes. Okay, you're on.
All right, thank you. So I guess I'll start by answering the question that was posted or posed to a town planner. It is for a single family development. It is for regular residential use. I've built this property elsewhere in town as well as in other towns in the area and it's always been for regular residential use, most recently just this year, 81 Breakneck Hill Road in the town of Southborough. So I purchased this property back in April of this year. And the goal, the intent was to build the same property that was being built at 81 Breakneck Hill Road on this site as well, just the reverse image of it due to topography setbacks, layout, whatnot. It is a bit of a slope site and I have to go up against meeting setback lines. Getting the septic to fit, wetland and staying out of there, you know, no touch zones and whatnot. And therefore I submitted a building permit, I believe, back in June for the single family as I had plans already ready to go and Board of Health sign off. And then I found out when going through the permitting process that Lover's Lane is a scenic road. And that anything I was going to do to what's left of the stone wall there and the trees that are in the front would require me to come to a meeting such as this one. So that's why I'm here this evening. I believe that the plans have been shared with you folks for the site. I'm going to bring it up if that's okay and share my screen.
You should be awesome.
Folks see my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So what I did is this is no different than the plan you folks have in your hands. All I did was the trees that are in the front are, it's a little difficult to follow the table that's on the bottom left. There's really no way to identify it. So I'll be providing screenshot pictures of the of the site, of the trees at the site. So you can see what we're referring to and what I'm asking to remove. So I'll start with the stone wall first. There is a stone wall shown on the plan. There's not much left of that stone wall. It's been like that since I purchased the property. It's not something that I maliciously did to remove from the site. It's the way it was and in going back to photos from 2019 and older, it it looks the same. So the initial intent when I put the building permit into the system, the Southborough system, was to have the driveway come straight down like this as such. As you can see from the site, my septic is here. I don't have anywhere else to go. It is a one acre site. However, I can't use much of it. There's a London Boulder Wall back here that through conservation I have to do some repairs to. And beyond that is the wetlands that you folks can see. And this is the 20 foot wetland buffer and then the 100 foot wetland buffer is shown here. So this property as it stands right now meets, fits within the setbacks with frontage, with meeting the requirements to maintain distances off of public ways for the septic as well as distances from the building for the septic. And again, given the topography of the lot, as you can see with all the dashed lines and its proximity to the rear London Boulder Wall. Basically fit what I could based on a plan that I've had success with and that my clients really enjoy. And that fits with the neighborhood because Lover's Lane is a nicer neighborhood in town. I have, I've thought I had a plan that would work. So the only problem was that Lover's Lane itself is rather narrow. And the turning out of the driveway is a bit difficult given the how the driveway was set up. And then also if the homeowners ever threw a party, which again is not a hardship for for you folks. But if the future homeowners ever threw a party, had guests over, you can't park alongside Lover's Lane. Again, it's it's a very, very narrow road. So the intent was to be able to create a turnaround. So that they wouldn't have to turn out into the street while also allowing them to be able to exit the property without any issues turning onto Lover's Lane as well as being able to, if they have kids, they can park their cars here. Not for any other purpose like protected use, which requires additional parking or anything like that. That's what prompted us to come to this meeting with this plan. The stone wall is, again, like I mentioned earlier, predominantly destroyed. There's not much there. Whatever is left as I, if accepted. If I were to install the driveway as shown, I would take the stones that are remaining and build them back up over into the areas which will remain undisturbed as part of the proposal. For the trees, there are 10 trees labeled A through J. They range in sizes from 12 inches down to three inches. I did speak with the tree warden in town. He had a arborist come out and look at the trees along with a number of other ones within the town. They did flag, I think they only look at trees that are six inches or larger. So that's why in the email that he sent that I believe was shared with you folks. It said that there were six trees, but in actuality there are 10. But as you can see, these four trees here are three inches, four inches, five and five. So I don't think it falls within their jurisdiction. That's the only way I can reason it. Of those six trees, two of those have defects in their cavities. That's B and C shown here and I'll show pictures of those as well for the folks. And what else? The property, as you also, it's noted here, it's, let me scroll down a little bit. This is my lot corner over here, but there's already, this part of the site is heavily wooded already. And there's a remnant of an erosion control here from, I don't know how long ago, from which owner or whatnot. But this has remained undisturbed and the goal is to not touch any of this area at all with my plans as well. So I'm only going to be proposing to disturb areas of the lot that have already been disturbed at some point or that have been cleared. Except for the additional trees that are across the front of the lot. Any questions on the site plan or should I move forward to the pictures?
Why don't you show us the pictures?
Sure. So this first one is a full site view showing the lot. This is the lot here. And I will, next one. This is tree A with the placards on them. This is tree A with the placards on them. This falls into the right side of the driveway. This is tree B. It's got a cavity and it was noted by the tree warden as well. If I zoom in a little bit, you'll notice that it's got a four inch hole inside of it through the center. The tree warden mentioned that these may over time, they won't survive construction and then they over time just give out completely. Same with tree C. It is a, this is the 11 inch tree that's shown and it has a five and a half inch hole in the bottom. I believe this tree may have been impacted by snow plowing or something. I'm not sure how that came about. Also, if you notice through these, you can see that there's not much of a stone wall left in these photos. These are those three trees that show up within that right entrance on the driveway. I have to dance around an existing fire hydrant that's here. And then what I've done, if you folks can see within this picture. These yellow rods, these yellow iron spikes that I've spray painted show where the mouth of the driveway would be located. The actual driveway would be here. So this picture, this being the turnaround and this being the turnaround. And this tree, given its proximity to the driveway, more than likely, given its root ball. And again, you can see the cavity very clearly here in this photo. I don't think it would survive the construction and rather than making a problem for the future homeowner or the town with it falling because of the fact that it's already deteriorating. I was proposing to take this tree down as well if possible. That's these three trees. Then we move on to the next cluster of trees. So these are the smaller ones which don't show up in the tree wardens email. Again, smaller size. This one is, I believe, five inches. This one is another five inch, sorry, zoomed out the wrong way. The four inch tree. Three inch tree. Again, not much of a stone wall shown. Then we go towards the front row, which is the larger ones which are in the tree wardens email. This is tree H, the 12 inch tree. Another 12 inch tree. And I believe this is a 10 inch tree here, this one. This is the last one per the plan. Then I've got another visual. So these are the trees in the second driveway opening. Again, what I've done here is I've marked where the mouth of the driveway is. So I'm going to zoom in a bit. If you see here, there's one of the iron spikes. And this would be the mouth of the driveway again, swooping in like this. This would be the other mouth of the driveway sweeping, swooping in. So what you can't see behind these three trees is those other small trees that are buried behind them. But there are a total of seven trees within this area. This shows another angle of those seven trees. You can see those other smaller trees more clearly here. You can also see the spikes for the mouth of the driveway shown as well. This is that area that I mentioned is also my property. However, it's already wooded and I don't plan on disturbing this in any way, shape or form. This is a neighbor's house directly adjacent to us at 22 Lover's Lane. They have a horseshoe driveway, but they also have an additional curb cut and driveway going down to their home. So in doing the horseshoe driveway, it's consistent with the house next to me. This is another view of it as well. They probably did it for the same reasons as I'm mentioning. And then this is just the road view. Again, this is what the property looks like. Through Google Maps, again, this is 2019. I purposely use this photo to show that even before purchasing this property, this is what the site looked like. I do have to, again, based on the site plan, I have a fire hydrant, I have a utility pole, I have the topography, I have conservation that I'm trying to coordinate getting through and getting around while still making the property accessible in the safest way. So that is the photos that I have. And again, I'll open it up for any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the photos. Gives us a good picture of what you're trying to do and what the where the trees are. Karina, you indicated that there were correspondence from the neighbors?
Yes.
And were any of them in favor of cutting all the trees down?
We received three emails and no.
Are they short enough to be read?
Yes, they're basically the same. So if I read one, they're, they're all pretty the same. So if there's any difference, I'll, I can read the difference.
Okay.
I'll read one completely. So the first one I received. Just make sure I do this in order. Okay, so the first one I received from Ari. Give me one second. And Ashley Hasiotis at 14 Lover's Lane. And I think they own the property there. And it says to Southborough Planning Board, our reference to scenic road tree removal here in November 15th, 2021, whom it may concern. We are writing to respectfully object to tree cutting on Lover's Lane specifically to the cutting of the 10 living healthy trees that are currently marked in front of the vacant lot at 22 Lover's Lane. We object to the cutting of all the marked trees, including those listed herein which are scheduled to be cut. Tree size slash species are listed below. And they list the 10 trees as identified. Two 12 inch pignut hickory, four inch pignut hickory, five inch pignut hickory, nine inch pignut hickory, two 10 inch pignut hickory, 11 pignut hickory and a 15 inch pignut hickory. And three inch pignut hickory and any other trees so marked in this vicinity that are not called out here. The reasons for objection. Southborough has a tree city designation which protects these trees. And bullet item number two, Lover's Lane has been designated a scenic roadway per the 1978 annual town meeting, which designated all town roads other than those excluded by state statute as scenic roads under provisions of Massachusetts General Attractive 40, Section 15C. This designation gives the community authority and regulate trees. Street tree stone walls and other construction proposals allowing Southborough to maintain these historic roadways. Therefore, we believe cutting these trees, living trees with materially change of character scenic road on Lover's Lane. I just want to point out, there's one more paragraph, but in the interim, I contacted the two of these abutters, two of the abutters who referred me to the other Heidi Davis. And she explained, I asked her where she found that statement regarding 1978 annual town meeting. It was actually a reference in the 2008 master plan, which had a brief phrase that said that there was a 1978 reference to scenic roads. But in further investigation, it's my understanding that that was really referring to a motion that was made in 1970 eight, 75, right, maybe 75. The motion was made for all, but when it was amended, it only, it came down to nine streets and then another nine or 10 in a following year's article. So they understood that when I explained that, that's, that's what I had found, that the reference was to that. So the last paragraph is, as a neighbor and a butter, we believe the town should not be taking down any live trees. Instead, if there's a presumed property under development, the development should design around the existing trees. This property was originally planned to have a shared drive with 22A Lover's Lane. And these existing trees do not impede this approved plan. As is commonly understood, it takes many years to grow mature trees. Mature trees benefit the scenic roadway and per the town's designations, protecting such trees for the maintenance of a tree city and scenic road is important. And removing these trees would be contrary to the town's own tree city and scenic roadway designations. For the above reasons, we respectfully request these 10 trees not be cut. Thank you for your time and consideration. Again, respectfully, Ari and Ashley Hasiotis, 14 Lover's Lane. This email was repeated, received November 7th from Heidi Davis. 20 Lover's Lane, Heidi and Ted Davis. And then also the same email language on November 8th from the failure Hasiotis founder and president of Colm Moses Foundation. So I inquired if she was a resident there and they referred me to that she was at 18A Lover's Lane. So those are the three emails. And then the last email was the one from Heidi Davis that I received today regarding the use.
So does anyone have additional information relative to the statement that that lot is supposed to share a driveway with another lot?
I did some additional research on that as well with one of the I believe it was with Heidi Davis. I looked through A and R plans and asked her where, you know, I think it was Heidi, it was one of the abutters. And I looked through A and R plans and we found no evidence of anything depicting a driveway that would be shared. But we didn't, I did look with the resident to, to see where they came up with that information. And I don't think they recalled and that's why I looked with them while they were on the phone to assure them that I hadn't seen anything like that.
I also didn't see one either, Ben. I was doing my research to purchase the property. Had there one, had one been there, it would have made things a little difficult for me because the property next door that I am to supposedly share the driveway with was already bought and sold with a certificate of occupancy. So it'd be very difficult for me to try to go back and gain an easement on something that has been sold a couple of times since being built. And I didn't see one either within any other records of the registry of deeds.
Karina, we have four planning board members here tonight. Can you explain what actions are required or able for the planning board members to perform during this public hearing?
Can you rephrase that? I just want to make sure I understand what you want me to say. Or what answer you're, what are you asking again?
We want to make it clear to the planning board members and to the public and to the proponent and the neighbors that what, why we're having this here. I think you already explained that in the public hearing notice. But what actions are within the authority of the planning board as a result of this public hearing? Is the planning board able to vote to cut all, some or none? And is it a majority vote? Is it a binding vote? So on.
Well, it's my understanding. And I don't recall all the precedents here and maybe you can help me from your history. I believe the planning board is able to vote to allow the wall to be removed, the trees to be removed. All or in part or none with conditions. I believe it's a majority. I'm not 100% sure. I do have a an email into town council asking some general other questions about this process and that if the decision of the planning board is appealed by either party, it would go to a a court, it would go to court. Whereas if it was not on a scenic road, the planning board would not be involved. The tree warden has the jurisdiction for anything over an inch and a half to opine if a tree can be removed. And then that particular process gets appealed to the board of selection. But for the planning board, it's my understanding, according to Mass General Law. Chapter 87. Sections one through seven primarily indicate the whole public hearing process related to tree removal and then Master and Law, Chapter 40, 15C overlaps that because of scenic road designation. And the town, from our research, only has these particular trees, particular scenic roads that are listed from articles back in the mid 70s, which Lover's Lane happened to be one. So does that answer some of your question?
Yes. You referenced my experience with tree hearings. And, you know, several decades on the planning board years ago, we had, we used to have tree hearings more commonly. And in those hearings, it was usually a joint hearing with the tree warden and the five planning board members. And a vote would be taken either, usually it was for one tree and some cases it was several. And we can vote tree by tree or the whole package. And it was, it would be the majority of the five planning board members and the sixth person, which would be the tree warden.
I can tell you that the tree, the DPW is aware of this public hearing. And they also placed the placards for me on the trees in, in preparation for this public hearing. And a memo was going to be provided to me. I'm not sure that they had a chance, but the DPW was aware of the circumstance and the plans that were provided. They were provided a copy of the application.
So the process that I'm familiar with, again, had five planning board members and a, and a tree warden. So six people. And in most cases, if the tree warden wanted to leave the tree up and the majority of the planning board or four of the members wanted to take it down, then it would come down. And, and in reverse, if the tree warden said, no, I voted, we cut the tree down. And the all five members or four members, which would make it four out of six, voted to leave the tree up and the tree would stay in place. So is if that process is still in place, which I think it is, and we don't have the tree warden here or a reason why he's not here. Not sure if we should proceed with a vote. Also, since you have questions into town council, I guess I would ask Mr. Hatami, if you want the board to vote tonight? Or if the board wants to vote tonight? Or if we want to continue the public hearing until we get a little bit more information on the process and the participation of the tree warden?
So I'll answer the first part. The first part was about the tree warden. I actually have an email from the tree warden with his recommendation. I, I assumed that that had been shared with you folks, but if it hasn't, you might if I read it to you folks, I can also share it on the screen.
You familiar with?
It was in the packet.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, his, his last comment within it was, although most are healthy, I don't believe any will be able to survive the harmful, harmful effects of the construction. They should be removed to avoid town liability associated with their decline in the future. There's some other verbiage further up, but again, I'm not sure if you want me to reread the whole email or if you want to present it for anybody from the public to view it.
And I think it referenced the trees that were over a certain size.
That's correct.
Yeah, there were six of them listed in, in, in a table. And it's in the packet. I'm sorry, I forgot, I forgot that was there.
And I apologize for not seeing it. But it looks like the rest of the board has seen it and is familiar with. But it looks like the rest of the board has seen it and is familiar with it. So the second part of the question is, do we want to proceed? Is that, is the tree warden's email considered a vote during this public hearing? I just want to make sure that we do the right thing. We, we follow the proper process. Why don't I open up to the board first? Or second part of the question, Mr. Hatami, is it your desire to have the planning, to have the public hearing continued?
I was hoping to see if I provided all the information sufficient to answer any and all questions either you folks or the public had so that I could proceed to a decision from you folks.
Tonight?
Obviously there, tonight if possible, if unless I'm missing something or there is additional information requested on you folks that will help make a, a better decision, a more informed decision. I believe Marnie had her hand raised. She had a question that she wanted to ask. So if anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to respond with what I can.
Thank you for helping me run the meeting. Let me go back to Karina. The request, the request that you have into town council, I have read, but can you, do you feel that that information is essential or helpful in the planning board's vote?
Well, I think there is a little bit of two things happening at the same time here. So the town in the planning board in conjunction with the board of selectmen and the DPW were working on a public shade tree removal policy that we started last fall. And for various reasons, it's been worked on and then not worked on and modified, et cetera. And as a matter of fact, you know, we would be discussing this in the December meeting for board of selectmen's benefit regarding this policy. At the same time, there's an existing methodology that I explained and you also explained about the precedence of how this has happened in the past. So the email that I sent to town council or for bigger picture items regarding this policy that we're trying to get implemented that is still kind of being tugged back and forth, which involved, you know, the question on consolidated public hearings for scenic road tree removals.
I think I have, I think you've given us the answer.
Okay.
That policy is not official. It's like you say, it's being discussed and it, it has no bearing on this current pro, this current hearing. It's not, it's not there.
Not technically in effect.
Okay. Why don't I open up to the board then? Mr. Stein, any questions, comments, recommendations?
So if for some reason we were to deny this application, what, what recourse does the proponent have for constructing? Would he just construct? And if there's damage to the trees, it's, you know, whatever happens, happens or is the, is he then in a position where he has an unbuildable lot? What, what is the consequence, Karina, for the board having a decision that would not allow the removal of the stone wall or any of the trees?
Well, the consequence in one part would be that he couldn't build his house. He wouldn't be able to construct a home on a, on a, on a, what is for the most part a buildable lot.
Well, I just, in the context of the tree wardens comment here, that the trees should be removed because on the basis that they won't survive construction and that that would present a liability to the town, that's not congruent with the concept of the the decision not to allow to be an inhibitor to the construction with tree wardens saying is if you guys don't allow and remove the trees, they won't survive the construction, there could be a liability. So I would like clarification on that, please, before we vote.
So the tree warden's letter, if I may, Don?
Yeah.
Excerpt a little bit from it so it's clear. This is an email from the tree warden in October. Here is the information provided by the certified arborist based on your request to remove the trees at this location at your own expense. Please let me know when you receive a decision from the planning board on your request. All trees were inspected on Monday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The findings are as follows. Twenty-two lovers lane. This address is currently a vacant lot cleared for future development. There are six trees, it says five, but that was a typo, six trees located in the public right of way at this address. And they are, from my understanding, I interpret them as the eleven and a half inch, the twelve inch, the eleven and a half, the nine and a half inch, the ten inch and the fifteen point three inch trees. And there's a, they're all pignut hickory and they're all defined as good, 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 fair, fair, good, tricavity, five percent deadwood, et cetera. There's a chart there. And then it says recommendation, trees one, two, three and six are in good condition while five and six have basal trunk cavities that will diminish their mechanical stability with age. Each tree is located in front of the lot and will be vulnerable to damage from home building activities, i.e. construction equipment, storage and new infrastructure, et cetera. Although most are healthy, I don't believe they will be able to survive the harmful effects of the construction. They should be removed to avoid town liability associated with the decline in the future. So if you look at the site plan specifically where the trees are, let me just see if I can find my copy here. Maybe you can pull that up one more time.
Would you like me to share?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Eat it maybe, but what I'm saying is
Are you, are you getting clarity?
I don't know why we're getting into all this. The question is very specifically, if we vote not to allow the trees to be removed, does that render the lot unbuildable?
Well, he'd have to park in the street. So I, I, you can build a house, but where do you park? And is that a contingency on?
Seen the plan that allow, that has sufficient space between tree A and B for a car to get in there.
Okay.
So it would be buildable. It wouldn't be, probably wouldn't be practical, but it's not a continuous set of trees that prevents access to the site. As a matter of fact, the biggest gap between the trees is between A and B. So
But the stone wall is also there too. Yeah, right, right. So there's stone walls and trees. So
So it may, it may be
Sorry, I was just gonna ask, does our jurisdiction extend to the stone wall too?
Yes.
Yes. Because it's a scenic road.
Well, I guess what I'll do is just kind of share where I stand at this moment, which is, you know, we've, we've consistently been very preservationist with these types of things in the past. And I, you know, I, I understand the predicament of, of owning this lot and wanting to you know, highest and best use develop it. But when you're, when, when we're, we're in a situation that involves the preservation of protected trees and a stone wall, planning board has been very conservative in my time on this board and very preservationist. So I, I'm unfortunately not in the, in, in the mindset of approving the application at this time. Thank you. Mrs. Latrell?
Um, is there a way to put in the driveway in a turnaround without having the, the U driveway so more of the trees could be preserved? And then replacing the trees that are that need to come down for the driveway?
So the second part of that is about replacing the trees. Absolutely. We can do that. That's a requirement. We can plant new three-inch caliper trees. If I can, let me try to share my screen again. We can plant trees closer to this area here where my mouse is hovering. Because again, it's within, I'm not going beyond where there's already trees and do not disturb or erosion control. And I can plant them here. I can also plant them along this front section right here where there are currently no trees. So one may look at this and this first part was about repositioning the driveway. If I was to make this turnaround, instead of being here, which unfortunately is where the cluster of trees are currently and move it here, it's not a, that's not a turnaround that a car can really make without driving over lawn and whatnot. The other option I have, if you're talking about repositioning, although not as accommodating for a future homeowner, but more accommodating for the preservationist mentality is to shift this horseshoe to come in from here. I mean, I would still have to disturb what's left of the stone wall, which again, as you saw in the photos is there's almost nothing left. Is to come in from here between these sets of trees. Basically center the center point of the horseshoe on the driveway, on the garage and return out somewhere here between the fire hydrant that exists right here and this area where I'm not disturbing any more trees. So it would still be a horseshoe like this, however, not as not as functional. But it would still allow me the, the, it would allow the homeowner at least to be able to back out of their driveway and then circle around and come out or come in and then swoop into their garage. Did I answer both parts of the question?
Yes. So there, so it is possible to have the driveway without removing the trees?
It is possible. Not, again, not as easy, not as amenable maybe to a future homeowner, but it is possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Houlihan?
Yeah. So I, thank you, Mr. Hatimi. This was, my, Mimi's question was my question as well is, you know, to try and just accommodate it, do you have to put a horseshoe in? Can you put a large kind of circle in front of the house? You know, again, understanding aesthetics are important. But I think you are dealing with a preservationist plant, planning board here and we really are trying to preserve the scenic road and, and how it's a protected roadway and the trees, particularly the, the tree warden's letter saying that majority of those trees were in good condition. I know the three that he indicated that had some of the, the bigger gaps in them. You know, if there's, is, there is a way to work around those and accommodate fewer trees, you, you know, or saving more trees and to only taking fewer trees. But I think I'm inclined with the proposal as it is, is it's, it's far, it's a lot of trees. One thing when you did say it's more difficult, I think with this, this, the hydrant there, I'm not sure what implications a hydrant may have in putting in a, you know, a driveway around that. Does that impede your ability to move that, that shift the driveway? You said you could kind of shift in the place you weren't going to touch. But I can imagine those have, that has some water lines associated with it and digging and challenges.
Yeah, the good news there would be that, I mean, I have to dig anyways to connect the home to town water, which is what this service line here is being depicted right next to the water line. So fortunately I shouldn't. If I were to go down that route, as you mentioned, I wouldn't be adversely impacted because of the hydrant per se, other than the fact that I can't go through the dra, through the fire hydrant. Another question I have for you folks is given that tree's B and C, as you saw in my photos, which are damaged, more than half of the, the tree is missing internally. And as the tree warden also said in his email, would it be okay with the board if there was a way that I could at least get these two trees removed and figure out a way to dance around this one remaining tree so that I'm only taking down the damaged trees at my expense and planting two new trees, again, maybe elsewhere along the front edge, which wouldn't which wouldn't impede the driveway? I, I'm at your discretion right now to see what, given the fact that as you folk, a number of you have mentioned, this is a preservationist planning board, which one would be more amenable to you folks? I, I would also add that a number of the homes on this street that have been developed from two thousand and onwards have had to cut across a stone wall and remove trees already. So when I approached with this application, I didn't think that I was doing anything that severe, although when looking at the site that's fully cleared except for the front, I could definitely right now, hearing what you folks say, I'm basically cutting everything that's left in the front. So I can see why in this bunch of trees, there'd be some severe hesitancy to do that.
You all set, Marnie?
Yes, thanks.
So what I'm hearing, and by the way, I'm, I'm glad this discussion is heading in this direction. And your last comment about in the, since the two thousands, other driveways and trees have been cut down. That goes back to what I said earlier, which was prior to that era, that timeframe, we did have more public hearings. And since then, we've seen trees, stone walls being removed with no hearings. We just hear the chainsaws off in the distance. And when we drive down the street, we see the tree is gone. And that's why as town planner was saying, it's been quite a bit of work being done for a tree policy so we can get some control over how the, the trees are managed along the public ways. So it would seem to me that if, that the board consistent with the tree warden's recommendation could vote to have trees B and C removed with A and all the others left in place. And the board could vote to alter the stone wall based on a revised plan of your new driveway layout with the understanding that the, any stones that were removed would be placed on the remaining part of the stone wall to, to beef it up a little bit. So that is what I'm hearing. That seems to be a possible solution for the proponent and the tree warden relative to the deteriorated trees B and C and the neighbors who don't want any of the trees cut down, but and I would be opposed to cutting B and C down also. But looking at those pictures and hearing the tree warden, it may be okay to do that. So I'll open it back up to the board. I guess what we're looking at is a vote to allow the removal of B and C and the removal of a portion or portions of the stone wall in, in the area near, in the area needed for the new driveway layout, which would be submitted to Mr. Hatami for final disposition by the, by the planning board. Is, is that? Is, is that the, any, any agreement with that by the board members?
Mr. Chairman, you said the removal of the stone wall, or the, is the wording mo- re- relocation within the site of the stone wall?
That's probably better. It's just that wherever he plans to put the driveway, those stones would have to be relocated to portions of the wall that are not to be touched. I think we're saying the same thing, Jesse.
So, if I understand it correctly, you, you, you're, the motion would be to for, for 22 Levers Lane, for, to permit the proponent to remove trees B and C only, and to relocate the necessary portion of the stone wall within the site.
To accommodate the U shape, which we haven't seen, but he's indicated where the U, the U shape would approximately be, if that's close enough for us, as long as A and D, E, F, G, H, and I, and J are, are not touched left in place, then the location, the exact location of that U-shaped driveway has been described in general. And seems like it would sa, it would save A, Tree A, and still, still make it work for the the street and for the homeowner's driveway.
Okay, well, I, I could support that compromise. I'm curious to hear what the other board members think.
Mrs. Latrell?
Um, do we have like a tag number or something for B and C? Because I, I don't think we have these plans that are, that the trees are alphabetized on, so just so we're clear that we are all talking about the same thing. When the, when the tree warden put plaques on the trees, did he put a little tag number on them?
He, he did. I don't know if he did it, but someone at DBW put the placards on there for planning. In other words, they were helping me out because of my time constraint to get out there, to put them out there, and they had the method to do it, so. The, if you zoom in, is there a tag number on that placard? Maybe Sarah remembers, because she created the document.
I don't think so. What, so what they, what they do for theirs is they have a little metal tag with the number on it.
Right, no.
Oh, okay.
There's no tag number, there was no identifier for these particular trees. But in a, in fact, that Hamid has to provide us that plan anyway, a PDF of the plan with the lettering on it for meeting minute purposes.
Okay.
Anyway, and the photographs as well, Hamid, you'll have to send those to me, because we need those for the record. And the other clarification is that would, would he be submitting a plan that shows a shoe shape for me to bring back to the planning board, or for me to ensure that it meets the planning board's intent?
I'm suggesting that after we, if we hear enough of the members who can support the removal of B and C, and the removal of a portion of the stone wall, relocation of the stone wall, then we would go back to Mr. Hatami before we take the vote tonight, and have him show for the record, this is being taped, with his mouse. I'm not sure if we've ever done this before, but it'll work. The approximate location and size of the openings on the plan, and then, once you submit a actual hard copy plan of the new layout, you would submit that to the town planner. And if she determines that that's consistent with what you said tonight, and consistent with the vote that the bo, board takes tonight, then she, she could give you the green light to go ahead. So it could be done in the next couple of days. Is that, uh, I, I think that's the way to go forward. So, were you all set with that, Mrs. Latrell?
Um, yeah, I'm in favor of that plan. The only thing I would ask is that the, the two trees be replaced, because there's some of the bigger trees that are coming down. But I, I'd be in favor of, of that. Thank you.
We heard earlier that those, if those trees were voted to be removed, and they were removed, the two three-inch-plus caliper trees would be planted, probably in that gap in, in front of the house. Mrs. Houlihan?
I'm also in favor of the compromise.
Can I just ask, would those two replacement trees be in town right of way or on the private property? Could they be planted on, in the private property within 20 feet of the town right of way? To count as Tree City USA trees, Tree City USA community trees? Or would you want him to plant them back into the right of way? Which i- it's a tight road.
I would say, as long as they're considered public shade trees, then 20 feet is fine.
Yeah, they wouldn't be considered public cha, shade trees unless they're in the right of way. They would still be effective towards Tree City, because they have a definition that if you're within 20, if someone plants a tree within 20 feet of the right of way, they count that. But it wouldn't be under the jurisdiction of the town anymore. In other words, that, they, they wouldn't need permission to cut them down in the future. So, the, I was just asking, we, you know, if you want them in the town right of way, I just want to confirm that, so that's where they're put, if this gets approved. Or if these trees are supposed to be somewhere else.
Isn't the planting of trees currently and proposed, the location of trees to be planted has to have the approval of this tree warden, if they're going to be in the right of way? They take into consideration the wires up above and the water lines or other utilities underneath. So if we say it should be in the right of way, I'm not sure if,
Maybe with the tree warden's approval of where they're planted.
That's probably the way to go at this point in time, till we get that policy straightened out.
I, I know it's convoluted, but it just, these are the questions that will come up as we go forward. Okay.
Did I already ask you, Marnie, if you were all set? Oh, that's right. So, we're ready for a motion. Let's do, let's do one at a time. Let's do Tree A, then Tree B, and then the stone wall.
So, the motion is for to, to permit the removal of Tree A, with the, with the condition that it be replaced per the guidance of the tree ward.
Yes, Marnie.
Tree A, or is it Tree B and C?
I'm sorry, one at a time.
So I,
Oh, I'm sorry. No, you're right.
I don't think A is included in this motion.
Thank you, Marnie. Yeah, so the motion is to allow the removal of Tree B, uh, with the condition being the, the replacement of the tree per the guidance of the tree warden.
Do we need to stay to size, minimum three inch, minimum?
Yeah, so moved.
Um, second, but should we ask for public comment before we vote?
We can. With motions been made in second, did you second it?
Yes.
Yes, you did. Any questions or comments?
We have eight attendees. No one has their hands raised currently.
Questions or comments from the board for Tree B? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stand, yes.
Latrell, yes?
And yes.
Next motion would be to address Tree C.
So moved, similarly to Tree B.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion, any questions or comments? Put, from the board, public? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stand, yes.
Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Takes care of those two trees. And now the motion would be to allow the relocation of two portions of the stone wall.
Within the site, so moved.
Second.
And now, if we could have the cursor show us in the public approximately where the stone walls would be, portions would be removed.
Be this area here, where there's no trees, and looping around to this area here, where there's no trees.
And how, uh, how many linear feet approximately of the stone wall for each of those sections would be moved?
More than likely, because now there is not a direct line from the garage necessitating 24 feet of width, which is the width of the garage. It would be consistent with the 14 feet that's here, single car width. 14 feet here and 14 feet on the side. Plus the mouth of the driveway. The mouth of the driveway adds another two to three feet, which is basically the flare that is within town property, like you normally see on any driveway. The part that's on the property line, the dimensions shown are from a property line to property line. Along the property.
Can I just ask, are you going to have 14 feet between the property line and the, oh, that's not your property line, that's the.
No, this, this is the property line here, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thanks.
And you agree to provide a new hard copy plan indicating that new layout?
Yes, correct.
With, with appropriate notes indicating the removal and relocation of stones?
Correct.
Any other clarifications, questions, comments?
And the reuse of the stones on, on, into the existing parts of the wall, right?
Exactly, yep. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stand, yes.
Latrell?
And yes.
So, we voted and left the public hearing open, but since we voted, I guess it's okay for us to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Anybody want to leave the public hearing open? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stand, yes.
Latrell, yes?
Liang, yes.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll anticipate the submission of that new layout on hard copy. Wish you a good night, and we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Mrs. Latrell?
Um, do we need to just memorialize that the other trees are to remain? Does that need to be a vote, or no?
I think you're only authorizing what gets removed, right? Stone wall removal application, tree removal application.
You know what? No, you know what, it wouldn't hurt to do that, because if you were, for example, if you were Tree D, and you had that placard stuck on your bark, and nobody voted, you might, you might be wondering what's next, so I suppose we should entertain a motion to deny the removal of D, E, F, G, H, I, and J.
And A, so moved.
And A.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Latrell. We're going to get, hopefully we'll get a lot better at this. If we start enforcing the, the rules. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stand, yes.
Latrell, yes?
And yes.
If there's nothing else, again, we'll wish you a good night, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for being accommodated.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion. It's the Open Space Report for FY21. So, presentation, which we have every year. And I think this may be the first year we've had it start before 10 or 11 o'clock at night. And I think Karina has arranged to have this presentation be as concise as possible. The report will be available to the public, because it's available now, isn't it? Oh, no wait, it, it is, okay. So, we'll get, we'll get through this presentation, which is always excellent, and let the public know that if they need more detail, they can log on and, and read the report, take a, a good look at it. So, go ahead, Karina, take us into it.
Okay, so, um, for fiscal year 21, we hired Lucas Environmental to do open space monitoring at several locations at seven locations, I believe. I just want to confirm that. We have Joe Orzal, who's one of their experts who prepared, who did the site inspections and also prepared the report, and he's in the attendees list, if you could.
Should be coming over.
Okay, so, in working with the Open Space Preservation Commission Chair, Freddie Gillespie, who came up and agreed to these locations, some of which were in the deed research database, an effort that was completed in 2015 to, to indicate different open space in subdivisions, et cetera. So, we had three stock, uh, Stockwell Farms, which is Stockwell and Fitzgerald Lane Reservoir View Estates, All American Storage, which is 10 Turnpike Road, a recent site plan that was approved that had open space restriction in the rear, Samron Village, which is now Boston Road Condominiums at 28 Boston Road, Angelica Estates off Pine Hill Road, Lincoln Lane off Vine Street in Ashland, and NVR, which was 119 Northville Road, predominantly a mix of town and private parcels. So, that report was completed substantially back in fiscal year 2021, and we just didn't have the bandwidth to get that on to a planning board agenda till now, to review this report, because it takes some time. And, you know, I had looked through it and they made some revisions, so here we are. And Joe Orzal's here to take us through his process efficiently and as quickly but as effectively as possible. So, we're just waiting for Joe.
Karina, is, Joe did this last year and the year before, right?
Correct.
It's the same, same scientist that did it, that does it.
Yeah, and it's the same format. It was originally started with Mass. Yeah, and it's the same format. It was originally started with Mass Autobahn, who did the pilot program for us. And then we transitioned over to Lucas because he had the availability to do it in the timeframes we needed it done.
There he is. Welcome, welcome back, Joe.
Sorry, I lost you there for a second. I don't know what happened.
You're on.
Joe, we see you, but you're not moving. There you go.
Okay.
There you are.
Well, hello. Karina, as the introduction mentioned, the sites that we looked at. What I'd like to do tonight, just to keep it pretty short, is note which site we're talking about and then just go to, write to the action items that we had recommended and maybe go through a few of those for each site. And at the end, if the board members would like any additional information on any of the, of the sites that we looked at, we can come back and, and address those if that sounds like a good plan of attack.
Yes, it does.
So the first site was Stockwell Farm. To include Stockwell Lane, Fitzgerald Lane, 32 lot subdivision off of Highland Street. It includes 11.6 acres of open space parcel due to the town in 2008. As well as open space easements at the rear of 12 of the lots. A couple of issues noted at this site where there was a structure located behind 44 Atwood Street that should be looked at to determine if it was, in fact, within the open space parcel and as to when the structure was actually built. Because it looks like, I'm looking at the aerial photos that it may have predated the actual open space date. Also, it should be verified whether there's any additional encroachment beyond observed landscaping within this area. Between 44 and 46 Atwood Street, the open space area has been landscaped. But the exact boundary of the property line was not determined there. So that should be looked at. There's also been some landscaping yard expansion activity at 2 Stockwell Lane. And that should be confirmed whether or not it's in the open space easement. It appears that it is. One of the recommendations that, or action items that actually applies to a lot of the sites is a recommendation that the town notify all the, all the property owners abutting open space of their responsibilities regarding the open space areas. And, and requesting any potential encroachment of debris or yard waste be removed. Oh, one of the things that's obvious at a lot of these spots is it's not just the property owners whose property the easement is on, but abutting properties that are dumping yard waste and, and material into the easements. So all these, all the abutment shouldn't have some way of, of being informed that, or reminded that they do abut open space, protected open space. I think that was the highlights for Stockwell Farm. The second site was Reservoir View Estates, William Cleary Lane. This is a five lot subdivision. Has open space easements on lots two, four, and five totaling a little over two acres. Much of which is wetland. Action items for reservoir estates were to number one, verify that the homeowners trust is meeting the obligations of the declaration of trust. It appears that the property owners are aware of the open space because there was very little encroachment or, or debris within the open space easements from the, the properties that the easements are on. However, again, abutting properties have contributed a fair amount of debris into the open space areas. And if yearly inspections have, would have been being conducted, this probably would have been noted during those inspections, as is supposed to be done under the homeowners agreement. One of the other action items is to reach out to the homeowners trust and encourage them to notify the abutting property owners that they do abut open space. And then thirdly, determine if management of invasive vegetation can be allowed or accomplished under the special permit, open space requirements of the, and the homeowners trust. This may allow some of the denser areas of invasive vegetation to be addressed before they get worse and, and overtake more of the open space area. Third site was All American Self-Storage, 10 Turnpike Road. This, let's see, had 0.7 acres of area designated as permanent open space. And action items on this one, there were several areas, or one area in particular of encroachment along the southern property boundary, which, again, the exact property line was not clear. The open space boundaries without, within the property were marked. But the property line was not obvious in this location and it appears that the abutting property is encroaching into the open space. That should be verified. One of the conditions of the open space was that it would not be allowed to, or invasive vegetation would not be allowed to become established. I don't know that any invasive vegetation has established since the development was permitted. However, there is there are extensive stands of Japanese knotweed on the property, which should be addressed in some way. Especially seeing that the conditions were, did not allow any establishment of invasive vegetation on this particular site. Fourth site was Samron Village. We looked at that one a couple of years ago before the units were, were built. Open spaces to the rear of the, of the lot is wooded and conditions within the wooded open space, very similar to what we observed back in 2019. Again, with the majority of the encroachment being yard debris, landscape waste. There was one area at the back of the development, at the back of the houses that were put, that were built, where there was a minor encroachment into the open space that was graded and now has lawn growing on it. And our recommendation would be to, to just make sure that that is allowed to reestablish naturally and not be maintained as lawn. And again, at this site, consider some way of notifying the abutting property owners of the presence of the open space, since that's where most of the, if not all of the yard debris, landscape debris is coming from. The fifth site is Angelica Estates, Angelica Lane off Pine Hill Road. The open space component includes 17 acres of open space on two parcels, A and B, that were deeded to the town in 2006. Part of the parcel along the eastern property line of the subdivision coincides with find it here. Coincides with a natural gas or a gas pipeline. Yeah. I was trying to remember what type of easement it was, the gas pipeline. There were several significant encroachments of yard extension into that portion of the open space easement that coincides with the gas line easement. Those should be addressed in some way, I imagine. That would be a recommendation to the board. There are also conditions that required a grass parking area, serving three to six cars was to be created off the cul-de-sac as required under condition number five of the planning board decision. I did not observe any grass parking area. It should be verified whether or not that was ever created. And also condition number three, the planning board decision required construction of pedestrian trails on lots, on parcels A and B. There was one mode path in the vicinity of parcel B that I observed, but I did not observe any other pedestrian trails and in the open space. So that should be verified whether or not that was actually completed. Lincoln Lane is the sixth area looked at. That's off Vine Street, actually off of Vine Street National. Consists of two lot subdivision with lot one in Southborough. It includes a small area of open space, about 0.2 acres divided into a north and south area. The south area is wooded and looked, didn't see any issues with that. The north area, part of the open space is being maintained as lawn and it should be determined whether or not that's allowed. It appears not, and it should be allowed to revegetate naturally. And the seventh area was NBR 119 Northborough Road. Located at 119 and 121 Northborough Road. Open space component includes 0.86 acres of open space. This was allowed to be maintained as an open field by hay. Which actually helps keep any of the invasive species down in this area. There are some invasive species present in the adjacent narrow wooded area. The fields that have been being haved are relatively free of any invasive vegetation. There was one section on of open space on lot one, 119 Northborough Road. Which was being maintained as lawn, which does not meet the conditions allowing hay, but it did not allow the area to be maintained as lawn or mowed annually, as was allowed under the open space requirements. So that should be addressed and allowed to grow in and only mowed annually or hay is allowed under the open space requirements. And then in, in general, some recommendations that we've included in the past. Just want to reiterate, we continue to recommend requiring the open space markers, which really help out in locating accurately the open space boundaries. The phenomarker, survey markers work well, as well as concrete markers. Some form of signage is also recommended in any of the town open space areas that are intended for public use, for their public trails. Some of those areas are difficult to locate where those sites are, are supposed to be being accessed from, which could allow to, you know, numerous trails being created on the site rather than concentrating access points in, in one or two locations. And then lastly, we would recommend that the town prepare some type of process to address any infractions and non-compliance of the open space. And we would suggest some kind of a standardized notification letter be prepared. Working with the planning department, open space preservation committee to identify any infractions, maybe set up a site visit with a property owner and then to come to some sort of a agreement on what their remediation of, of those infringements should be. So that was quickly a review of what we looked at this year. And if members have any questions specific to any of the sites, I'd be happy to try and address those.
Thank you, Joe. As usual, very thorough and clear, easy to understand. Any questions or comments from the planning board members?
Joe, great presentation and thanks for your diligence and your, your thorough review. We appreciate it.
Mrs. Latrell?
Yes, thank you very much. At some point, I think we should discuss sending a very courteous letter to people abutting the open space, maybe meet with the Open Space Preservation Commission in ConCon and come up with something non-aggressive, I guess. Thank you.
Mrs. Houlihan?
No questions, just again, another very thorough report, very detailed and very easy to follow. It's discouraging that we, we don't have really a mechanism to kind of enforce it. So I'm in agreement with you, Latrell. I was going to call you Latrell, Mrs. Latrell. If there's a way where we can kind of create that a harmonious letter from multiple boards or committees requesting compliance with this. I just think it's an important thing and our town is invested in this and other ways beyond hiring Joe to help us monitor it. So it'd be nice to have some mechanism for which to see it through. So thank you for drawing our attention to it. Again, just a really good review.
Your comments, all of your comments are consistent with pretty much the plan that we had probably 10, 15 years ago. And way beyond that, way before that, in the process of creating the open space, formalizing it. And then we, after created, creating a lot of this open space around town, none of it was being looked at, none of it was being checked. So we created this system of inspections, which comes out of the planning board's budget to start to inspect these open spaces and document good and non-compliance. And what we heard is, I think, seven out of seven, you found areas of non-compliance in all of them. And then years ago, we also talked about, oh, okay, we, we can see it with our eyes. We can document it with photos, the non-compliance, but nobody's doing anything about it. And different aspects, we, we had talked to the Conservation Commission and in some other towns, conservation does a crossover into open space, whether it is within their jurisdiction as, you know, within the 100 feet of a wetland resource. And unless I'm missing something, I believe our current Conservation Commission has consistently said that they don't have the resources to do these inspections, that their focus is on the Wetlands Protection Act and not to be going into these uplands and, and and not to be going into these uplands and inspecting non-compliance. We've talked to the Open Space Commission, and they've consistently told us that they don't have the resources to do the inspections, and not sure if they even have the jurisdiction to, or the power to do any enforcement. Gone to the building commissioner, not sure if we've gone to this building commissioner, but previous building commissioners, and they've said, no, we don't inspect open space, we inspect, you know, the projects, the utilities, the structures, and so on, but we don't do open space, so nobody does. So, and we've gone to the selectmen, and it's been talked about, but this is as close as we've come to that, and we're the only board, as far as I know, in town that funds any type of open space management. So, I think we'll try to take this forward and see if we can get. It would seem that sending these letters is absolutely essential, but there should be some power behind them, you know, if somebody gets a letter and says, you're going to stop mowing, you know, the last 10 feet of your backyard, doesn't say, or you will be fined, or you will be on, you know, Santa's bad list, it just is, it would just say, we don't want you to do it anymore, we want you to let it return to, to nature. And they just blow it, you know, some people would do it, some people would just blow it off. So, there has to be some type of enforcement. And that's something that we have to work on, and it would probably trickle down from the selectmen empowering someone or some entity in the town to either do the letters or be available to enforce the letters that may be prepared by some other group. Any other questions, comments, compliments to Joe?
Thanks, Joe, your big help, and I just want to say that on occasion, we get inquiries from various residents who think something is happening with an encroachment, and as we build these reports, they're kind of a go-to for that, with the plans and the action items to see if they will look that, and I can say that, you know, for the residents who have contacted me in the past, a few of them particularly waiting for this report, if something's not mentioned here, that, you know, we can address that at the planning department as well, and I can always follow up with a quick phone call to Joe if he recalls anything, right? Just to clarify, the report or not, so, we're not ignoring anybody. It's just a lot of information that we're processing, and we're building this document base as a go-to, and then as a, as a baseline, which eventually will take to the next level, like you're talking about. Slow but sure.
Anything else, Joe, or we can let you go?
I think that about covers it for me.
Very good, thank you, hope to see you again next year, or soon.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. It's quarter past 10. Next item on the agenda is the planner's report approval of minutes. We want to take care of that tonight, or bump it to December 13th.
Bump to December 13th, Mr. Chairman.
Any other bumps?
For the meeting minutes, too?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anything you want on the planner's report?
Can you do it in one minute?
Let me see, let me just see if there's anything critical. Tree policy will be coming up at the next meeting for discussion. I already told you about the AG approval. We did the open space inspection, the Chestnut Hill Road and roadway section, that's at the Board of Selectmen, that may have gone by. That's it. The new schedule for 2022 is on the planning website. Thanks, Sarah. For the help.
Great job again, Sarah, always.
Oh, yeah, happy to help.
Anything else from anybody?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded in any discussion. Anybody from the public? Last chance.
We do have four attendees hanging on, but nobody has their hands raised at the moment.
We wish them good night. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion hearing, none in favor, Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell?
Houlihan, yes.
Okay.